Good evening. It's 7:00 and we have a public hearing on the tax levy. And that will be followed by the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which will be chaired by Mike Madigan if he gets here. Okay. I'd like to call the public hearing, open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on our proposed tax levy, upcoming tax levy? I don't hear anyone. Anyone? Last call for talking about taxes. Well, since no one's interested in that topic, I will close the public hearing.
Okay. So, the hour of seven having come and gone. The City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole will come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons, Mr. Brown, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Madigan, Ms. Marlin, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Smythe, Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Okay. Approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Kim Surles wishes to address the members before the agenda item is being presented in support of additional policing.
Good evening. I didn't realize I'd get to start the meeting off. Again, my name is Kim Surles and my husband just started his 20th year with the Urbana Police Department. And I've been with him since his first day on the street. So, I've had the opportunity to see policing change over the course of two decades. And I'm here tonight to address the mayor's request for additional police personnel and perhaps give a slightly different perspective to what the police officers do for your community. So, I think we all agree that the police are a vital part of a community. But I think many people just see police officers pulling people over, making traffic stops, and think that they're filling the city coffers with fines from tickets. And that is far from the scope of their job. They're in fact, you know, a vital part of our community. And it is important that you understand that they are spending a lot of time learning about mental health issues, domestic abuse, criminal activity, accident investigation, school safety, active shooters, public safety. They get the opportunity to help a lot of people, but they also see the public at their absolute worst. And they are helping us. They see the pain and suffering during their shift. They help uphold our civic rights under the law and they help victims find the resources they need to recover. They help clean up the aftermath of an accident. They tell families a loved one has died. They see children hurt by those that should have loved them the most. They get drugs and guns off the street, but most of all, they look for opportunities to make the community a safer place for all. So, with that being said, the other thing that many of you do not realize is that most of us work eight to 10 hours per day. And our police officers are being asked to work a minimum of 12-hour shifts. But due to the current understaffing, so here we're talking about additional staff, but we're already understaffed, many officers are frequently asked to work 16 hours or more. Can you imagine doing these duties and still having the compassion and the drive and the energy that it takes after working 16 hours to be able to handle the citizen, you know, needs in your community? My husband's longest day at work was 23 and 1/2 hours. That means that he ended up being awake for 37 hours because when he's been at work for 23 and 1/2 hours, that means that something really bad has been happening and he can't just come home and turn it off. So, this is really starting to have an impact on the morale of the current police department. And that's in the work that I do. I work for the state of Illinois, so I certainly understand budget constraints. So, for those of you who have that concern, I see that as well. But I work with companies who recruit talent into their organizations. And so, I know what a competitive job market it is. So, first of all, I don't know why anyone would want to go into policing these days with everything that's happening. But then when you're dealing with a department who's lacking in morale and understaffed and, you know, police officers have the option to go to many other communities, why would this be a community that they would choose? So, the request is for a minimum of five officers, just to get you up to a comparable level of policing. And, you know, I think for officers to really be effective in their community, they really need to, it takes a long time for that training to occur. It doesn't happen right away. And so, I think, you know, the estimate is it takes three to four years for an officer to really be effective in the community because you first have to learn how to be a police officer. Then you have to learn the community. And then, you know, you really have to immerse yourself in there. And that's how you're proactive and you know and sense when something's not right. The other thing that I look at is, you know, in the next three to four years, there's at least 10 sworn personnel that are going to be up for retirement. And so, if you don't start the process of hiring officers today, you will perpetually be behind. And so, that's, I really encourage you to think about this and start this process right away. Because when officers are looking to choose a department, they are looking at departments that are staffed at a much greater size and they have these options. So, I just would like for you to take that opportunity and start this hiring right away. Thank you for your time. Yes, Mr. Smythe?
Charlie?
Yeah. Kim, thanks very much. I think you put your case extremely well. And I want to thank you and the rest of the spouses that stand behind your Urbana, our Urbana Police Officers, because it is, it's become a really tough job. I thought being in the military, growing up in the military was tough. But I think it's similar and maybe worse because it's day in, day out, dealing with the same issues all the time. So, I'm very supportive and I think you've put your case very well. I really, so I compliment you on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you very much. It was very well put.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have Lauren Sanders wishes to address the members before the agenda item is in support of additional police personnel.
Hello. Also, the spouse of a 17-year veteran of Urbana Police. In today's environment, we have to agree that the landscape is changing. Although Urbana is a relatively safe community, serious concerns are starting to emerge. And the weight created by the expectations placed on the shoulders of our police officers will soon be unbearable for the small number that we have. The city of Urbana has the best police officers and department, not just within the Champaign Urbana, but likely within the whole county, likely within the whole state. The officers are consistently asked to do more with less. They're asked to remain professional and responsive to community needs, all while being a target for extremist violence and accusations that all of them are racist. Officers' families rearrange Christmas, rearrange Thanksgiving, rearrange birthdays, and have other numerous special events without their families, spouse present, husband, father, uncle, grandfather, also that the city of Urbana can remain a relatively safe community. Officers don't do this for the accolades, but they do need support. When shots are fired, when a car crashes at Five Points, when a home is burglarized, when a subject experiences a mental health crisis, when the neighbor's dog is barking, who's asked to solve the problem? What support do the officers hear coming from this room on Monday nights? How many committees have been formed to study how to make the officers safer? How many special meetings have been convened to seek ways to increase officer safety? The community rightfully expects its officers to remain in a hyper vigilant state, to protect and serve and respond in a professional manner all the time. Yet, in the last two years, when the departments asked for tools to make the community safer, the community responded negatively. Our officers are constantly being negatively judged, belittled, and mocked by the community that they're willing to literally die to protect. How many people on this council have been on a ride along? How many of you have sat in with MetCad to hear what's happening, not just in Urbana, but in the county? How many have endeavored to really seek the truth and get away from the perceptions that the media gives about police officers? How many understand what they do all day, every day? I'm not asking you to do something that I haven't done myself. I was curious. I was raised with a lot of the similar perceptions that some of you have, and I needed to know more. And I married it. I chose it. I chose this life. So, I challenge those of you who haven't sought to understand law enforcement, not to understand it in an academic manner, not in theory, but understand it in a real and practical way. Make time to understand what our officers do and not just listen to people who provide jaded perspectives. I ask how the city and this council demonstrate an appreciation for the quality of officers that serve the city of Urbana. Asking for five officers is a starting point. It's not the end of the conversation. The discussion shouldn't be if we have five officers. It should only be about how to pay for them. The city is going to spend money, even if you don't vote for additional officers. The money's going to be spent in attrition. It's going to be spent in training expenses because people who can leave are going to leave. The money's going to be spent to cover services related to officer burnout. And the money will be spent on officer injuries that could have easily been prevented. How can the UPD maintain peace?
You have one minute, Ms. Sanders.
Resolve crime and disorder problems, hold suspects accountable for their actions, provide assistance to the citizens, and do community policing and reduce fear in Urbana. These officers need to see your support and not just hear the words. They need the support through tangible actions. The primary issue at hand isn't if they can continue to provide acceptable responses to core service work demands despite all these growing difficulties, but how long they can continue to do it, given the competitive nature of the demands and the presence of new demands that vie for that same attention. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have a slip from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They choose not to address the members, but ask that their position be entered into the record, that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Matt McElhough, Urbana Needs More Police Officers, is in support, chooses not to address the members, but asks that his position be entered into the record in support. Jeremy Hale, the topic being more police officers, chooses not to address the council, but asks that his position be entered into the record in support. Shannon Barnett, Barnett, is in support of more police officers, did not indicate whether you wish to speak or not. Okay. We'll take that as to be entered into the record. Kenneth Sprague, approval of hiring additional police officers, chooses not to address the members, but is in support. Lori Sprague is in support of hiring additional police officers, but chooses not to address the council. Next, we have Lauren Karplos regarding the Urbana Landmark Hotel and wishes to address the council at this time in opposition.
So, my name is Lauren Karplos. I'm a member of the Community Development Commission, but I'm here tonight as a private citizen and a homeowner in Aaron Aymans Ward. So, I'd like you to be able to clear up any misconceptions I might have about this because my information is coming from articles in the News Gazette as well as meeting minutes from past council meetings. So, I had some concerns and questions about the Urbana Landmark Hotel TIF Zone plans. Number one, is the TIF Zone essentially, was it essentially created to give it to this hotel? Or are there other projects planned with this TIF Zone? Has an independent market research study been conducted on the viability of the proposed boutique hotel? Has an independent study been conducted on how this project will affect the city's financial stability should the project fail? The reason I bring this up is because there are already numerous hotel options, and I believe there's advanced planning underway for a boutique hotel in downtown Champaign right now. In my job, I frequently book hotels at the last minute for visitors to town. And I can tell you that even on busy weekends, I always find a spot. Furthermore, the building currently looks like Hansel and Gretel's bones might be buried somewhere inside of it. So, I fear that no amount of boutiquing can really bring this up to today's current tastes and standards. What investigation has been done into the efficacy and success of TIF schemes to fund a single large private developer? The chance of failure for such a project is potentially high, with great risk borne to the taxpayers in the city of Urbana should the project fail. Furthermore, I believe that when the TIF Zone was passed, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, it was done with the general economic development phrasing, although clearly a specific project was already planned and had been underway in the city for months. TIF Zones can work when they are general facade beautification, infrastructural upgrade projects, et cetera. But have you looked into evidence showing that this would work with a single large private developer? Businesses want to make money and the economic incentive of the TIF Zone does nothing but eliminate almost all of the risk from the business owners, placing that instead on the onus of the city and the taxpayers, on a venture that business owners would otherwise deem too unprofitable to undertake in the first place. Another question, why has this been underway for months in the city? Has there been public announcements about it, et cetera? I've been on the receiving end of email communications with homelessness service providers all year in Urbana as they desperately search for a new location for a men's shelter. I suggested on two separate occasions to city officials, why not use the old Urbana Landmark Hotel? It's right upstairs from treatment services. It's right next to fire, police, and transportation, and very near the hospital. Both times I was told no, the Urbana Landmark Hotel is and must remain a business opportunity. Will the TIF Zone, if it fails, potentially cause property taxes to rise in order for the city of Urbana to remain fiscally solvent? Many young families and homeowners are already moving to the bedroom communities of Champaign and Urbana. I fear that such economic decisions may drive more of them away. Have you looked at nearby cities, for examples, of providing funding for single business projects? For example, in Bloomington, the Coliseum Project took the city from a balanced budget into a significant crisis which will take decades to come out of. Finally, I beg you to consider the economic impact that the failure of this project could have on the city as a whole, as well as the moral implications of providing a massive incentive to one business with presumably a non-local investor owner, I don't know, while ignoring the many local businesses which have struggled and thrived in Urbana over the years. I commend you for trying to do something with the Urbana Landmark Hotel in the past. I know that it was a struggle and it didn't work out. Let's brainstorm and think of other options before we sell this to one investor right away. I would encourage you to think. And I welcome responses to my questions because, again, this is all based on what I read in the meeting minutes and what I read in the News Gazette article. So, if I have misconceptions, please clear them up. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the mayor would like to have a conversation with you, if that's okay.
Yeah. You asked the question about whether this was a viable business. And we have an independent consultant who is in the hotel business. And she tells us that this is a very good business, that boutique hotels in campus communities have done very well. And the developer that's interested in this has done a number of very successful developments. So, yes, we have done a lot of research on this.
But a study? A study?
Yes, a study. We have done an awful lot of research on this. And this is a genuine historic hotel. You know, they might.
I like the insight still.
Well, I brought people here from all over the state of Illinois. They were from Chicago and they were very impressed. That was years ago when it was, when it was under different management, obviously. But we have found, we went to Indianapolis, for example, and they said the redevelopment of downtown Indianapolis was done by hotel development. That brings, that is a benefit to all the other businesses. And I was in Oklahoma City and a historic hotel there had been redeveloped, brought back up to standards, and it's just a gem. And it's the business center. So, I think there's a lot, lot of. So, what I would suggest is that you just wait until you see the actual proposal and what this company has done, and you might change your mind.
Sure. And I'm open to changing my mind. I'm not suggesting otherwise. But, again, I think you really need to consider the fiscal impact on the city should this project fail and what the TIF Zone is meant for and what TIF Zones are supposed to be for. I would just like that to be very openly considered as, it's a gift. It's a gift to a private developer. And it's saying, here you go. And do what you want with it. And what incentive do they have, you know?
Mayor?
I would just like to say there's a cost of not doing it.
Yeah. And I think what other suggestions have been proposed, what other ideas for that location have been looked into.
We have, we have examined other, but we'll have a complete report on it. Right now, we're in negotiations.
Eric?
So, I wanted to say one thing to you. The TIF Zone was not created for this or any other single developer. And that's, so, that's not the case. Now, my wife could attest to the fact that when I saw a discussion of this above the centerfold on the front of the News Gazette, I uttered some words that I could not utter here. Because all of us who were briefed on this were told that the negotiations were at such a stage and that, that they could be really screwed up by any publicity at that stage.
And I find that rather.
No.
I mean, what does that mean?
Okay. So, what that means, what that means is that there might be competitors for this developer. There's all sorts of stuff out there. So, negotiations up to a certain point, it's appropriate for them to be confidential. Past that point, all the details should become public and certainly should become public as, you know, at the time that we see the complete proposal and we make our decision. I don't know why this came into the newspaper at a time when, you know, I understood that it wasn't supposed to and understood the reasons for that. And it's really not that we're trying to keep anything from the public. Early-stage negotiations in any project, you know, they have to be, they can't be public.
So, where will the funding come from for this project? Is it from the TIF Zone that it's being levied or?
Well, that's, see, that's part of the negotiation process. So, the entire, you know, the details of all of that would be made public prior to our making the final decision.
Libby?
Well, I was going to offer that I would like to give Ms. Karplos a call. And I can inform you more fully about the project. And I do think it's perhaps confusing to just read a little bit of what was made public without knowing a lot of the other details in the background. And rather than taking the time tonight with everybody, I will call you and we'll have a conversation about it.
Okay. And I would just like to finally say, perhaps before others respond, you know, really, what does this mean for the financial stability of the city?
Charlie?
One thing that I, that there's a misconception out there, because I answered some other email today about it, the city doesn't own the hotel.
Right.
You know, in fact, XJ paid back over a million dollars to be out of hock with the city so that he can negotiate with somebody else.
I understood that, yeah.
So, that's, that's a big, that's a big piece here that I think a lot of people don't understand. Personally, you know, I won't enter into a project that puts the city at risk. I don't think anybody up here would do that. You know, we, we're, you know, any project we take always has a bit of a gamble on it. We're still trying to develop the block north here. If there was a project that was, was, you know, with the TIF in the back of the mind, this, this project here is, is a big one. And we have several plan, you know, the issues in downtown, there are a couple of other project proposals for downtown. Any of those would have a TIF component potential with them. All of them would be evaluated against what they could do for the city and vice versa, what we can do for them. And so, again, you know, all of, any, any of those kinds of developments are a gamble. But, but you're quite correct. You know, we have to be careful that we don't subsidize somebody else's risk more than, more than, they should be taking a risk as well, at least.
Thank you. Mayor?
I just wanted to tell Eric that this came up at our annual meeting of the TIF participants. So, we, so we didn't give all the details that we talked with council members, but we reported it. We had a report on the Enterprise Zone and also on the TIF, which is required by law.
Aaron?
So, Ms. Karplos?
Mm-hmm. Karplos, yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Jerry. Thank you for coming. And feel free to contact me through the email or whatever, and I'll answer whatever questions that you might have if I can answer them. And if you have further questions, if Libby doesn't, if you don't feel comfortable with that, just feel free to reach out and, and express your concerns to me directly. Thank you for coming again.
Dennis?
Yeah. And I'd just like to add that the city council members have been briefed individually about the potential of this project. But again, the negotiations are between private parties at this time.
Moving on. Julie Watkins?
None. I said, I'm just talking.
Okay. I'll just go ahead and read.
I'm in favor of a sanctuary city.
Right. So, if I may.
I thought I could check now.
Yes, you did. Trying to read the card. Julie Watkins is in support of the Sanctuary City Resolution, but chooses not to address the members at this time. Frances Boyle wishes to address the members before the agenda item, Sanctuary Ordinance.
Thank you very much for having me here again. I'm very happy to see that the resolution you're considering tonight reaffirming Urbana as a sanctuary city. As you know, in 1986, at the request of the members of Urbana, this community, I did all the legal work on the original resolution. And as a matter of fact, a few hours before I came in here that night to argue the case for Urbana to become a city of refuge, the American Nazi Party publicly threatened to kill me if I showed up. And I showed up anyway and spent the evening arguing the case. With respect to the current resolution, I, I think it's fine. But I do have two additional sentences I would like you to consider to adding. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, no city employee or official or department or agency of the city of Urbana shall request information about or otherwise investigate or assist in the investigation of the citizenship or immigration status of any person unless such inquiry or the investigation is required by a court order. That's been the policy here in Urbana since the original sanctuary resolution in 1986. But we believe, the people of this community that I represent, that that statement should be in this resolution to make it very clear what, what the policy is, not only for the people of the community, for the people in the state of Illinois and nationally, but also for the undocumented themselves so that they can feel safe and secure here in, in Urbana and especially cooperating with your police. We believe it's very important, you have community policing here in Urbana, for undocumented to feel that they can cooperate with the Urbana Police and not be turned over to the federal immigration authorities. As you know, the, in 1987, I debated the then INS, now ICE District Director for the Midwest up in Oak Park, Illinois, on this entire issue where he lived. And he publicly agreed with me that there is no obligation for state or local governments like Urbana to enforce the federal immigration laws, period. And nothing has changed constitutionally in that respect. So, we think, at least the people I'm here speaking for tonight. So we think, at least the people I'm here speaking for tonight, believe that that sentence is a very important addition to the resolution you have before you. And then the second sentence I would like to propose for you to consider. No city employee or official or department or agency of the city of Urbana shall condition the provision of city benefits, opportunities, or services on matters related to citizenship or immigration status unless required to do so by state or federal law or by a court order. And again, it's the same reason. My understanding, this is the policy that you're already pursuing. And we believe that it should be in there. Not only for the benefit of the people of Urbana, to spell out the precise consequences of this resolution, but also for the benefit of the undocumented. After all, that is the reason why we are here tonight, to make it clear to the undocumented in this community that we are not going to be tolerating discrimination against them for any reason, but we would like them to feel welcome here in Urbana. So I will file a copy of these two sentences with clerk for circulation to the members of the committee.
Frances, thank you for adding that. The... I think there's a little bit of misconception out there in the public. We had a couple of emails that, you know, people have sent saying that that these undocumented immigrants, whatever, are illegal. And that concept of them having committed a crime is not really the situation, as I understand it. You know, that they're here...
It's a civil law violation, except that Congress regretfully did pass a statute making it a crime to re-enter after deportation. So if someone had been deported once and then re-entered, that's now currently a crime. But other than that, it's a civil violation, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
So is a civil violation not a violation of US law?
It's a civil violation of US law, but it's not a criminal violation.
But it's a violation of law?
It depends on the circumstances. For example, if... Well, if you're a minor brought here by your parents, you haven't violated anything, right? That's the whole purpose of DACA. So anyone under 18 hasn't violated anything.
But if you're an adult who's entered the country, not through the immigration process...
You've committed a... Yes, I would agree with that. You've committed a civil law violation, but not a crime. That is correct, Mr. Madigan.
So violations of civil law are not crimes?
That's correct. I was hired here to teach criminal law. Originally in 1978, taught it seven or eight years. That's correct. Civil law is one thing, criminal law is another.
Okay. Eric?
So Frances, I'm smiling because I actually sent around an email suggesting the addition of almost exactly the wording that you're suggesting. So, thank you. But I do have a question. We also received a sample ordinance, a draft ordinance, that I believe you drafted or had a role in drafting.
That's correct.
And the... As I read that ordinance, but perhaps you can clarify that I've got it right, that ordinance does not say, encourage, or indicate that any employee of the city or official of the city would actually break the law. What it really does is say that it's the policy of the city that our employees and officials would, to the extent possible by existing law, protect or not inquire about the immigration status of anybody who's visiting or resident in the city.
That's correct. And the original ordinance I submitted, we did not want your public officials... I'm a lawyer. We're not asking for anyone here to violate the law. But as I said, and as the INS District Director agreed with me, Urbana has no obligation to cooperate with federal authorities on the enforcement of the federal immigration law. That's for the federal government to do. So that ordinance was designed to draw the line and to say, "This... We're not obligated to anything here unless there is a federal statute directly on point ordering us to do it, or a state of Illinois statute, or a court order." And then, of course, you would comply with those three sources of authority. So that ordinance, which I take it is not on the table at this point, so, okay. But it was designed for that purpose.
What do you think is the practical or legal significance of our adopting the wording in our resolution that you're suggesting tonight as opposed to adopting the ordinance? Does that really make a difference?
Well, obviously, there was a lot of hard work done on that ordinance. What can I say? But I understand this is a political body, and people here have different opinions, and you are responding to different constituencies. So in reading through the resolution that is before you tonight, 201612070R, all I would say is if you were to add those two sentences that I drafted, we believe that would take care of our major concerns. I believe... Mayor Pressing explained to me that the draft ordinance was a bit too complicated, she felt, for the Urbana City Council. Fine, we can accept that.
I think we're pretty smart.
We tried to provide you, you know, with what we thought was the best ordinance we can.
I thought it was very clear.
You know, if that's not politically viable, fine. But I think if you were to take the... What you have now, 070R, and add those two sentences, that would satisfy all of our concerns. And we can put the draft ordinance... We could try that somewhere else, sure.
Glad to know how you feel about us, Mayor. All right. Diane?
The mayor says she was quoting out of context.
I would like to have a defense attorney, please. You did send... You did... I have copies of what you sent, which I thought was very interesting. "Napoleons: Are Sanctuary Cities Legal?" And he was talking about there is no obligation for local governments, because he said the whole system...
That's exactly what I said, right.
Yeah, but you said if a federal law was passed... So he's trying to say that the states establish the federal government rather than the other way around. So which way is it? Could they pass a law saying that we have to enforce a federal law?
That certainly would be subject to serious constitutional disputation all the way up to the Supreme Court, that, as I believe Napoleono and other sources have pointed out, the federal government simply cannot dragoon state and local governments to perform its activities for them, and especially at your own cost. I mean, why should the good people of Urbana be paying for the federal government to enforce its immigration laws? You're already paying taxes to the federal government. You have better things to do with your money.
That's called an unfunded mandate, and we are very familiar with those. Because we live in the state of Illinois.
That's correct. And it's the same principle here. Napoleono... I just cited that, that he's the commentator for Fox News, which, you know, in my opinion, you can conclude what you want, it's pretty right-wing, but he's taking the exact same position I am, which is why I circulated it to you on the constitutional grounds. But I also point out, the INS District Director for the entire Midwest, in public debate with me in Oak Park, also agreed. You have no obligation to do it. You have no obligation to pay for it. And indeed, certainly, it's going to be counterproductive to whatever you want to accomplish here in Urbana if your officials then proceed to try to enforce federal immigration laws, and especially your police. How are undocumented in Urbana going to trust the police if the police start to turn them into the immigration authorities?
Well, I appreciate the work that you've done and all the information you've given us, so thank you.
Diane?
I just wanted to clarify, we have two versions of a resolution. One was in our packet, and another one was sent on Friday, which is even simpler than the one I think you're referring to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just given this as I walked in today.
Is that the latest version?
I believe... That's what I've been told, yes.
Is that the shorter one?
070R.
I think that's a different version from what we're looking at now. So we'll get you a copy.
Okay.
Mayor?
I did send you a copy. I sent you the shorter version.
The shorter version, right.
Yeah, I was just trying to make it simple, not because I think the council is dumb, but because I'm trying to get across that Urbana has already been doing this. We're not adopting a new policy. We're just reaffirming our policy and maybe clarifying it, because so many people are anxious about this. There have been big public meetings about it, so I don't want people to think we haven't been doing this all along. I talked with our former police chief, Mike Beely, and he said the officers never ask about immigration status, so...
Dennis, then Erin?
And that's why I just suggested those two additional sentences to clarify for everyone, especially the undocumented, that this is the policy here in Urbana. So those aren't anything new. It's just clarification that we believe should be in the resolution. Yes?
Dennis, then Erin?
The... There was a little bit of discussion a little bit earlier about the significance, perhaps, or the fact that immigration... Immigrants who've come to the United States and maybe are undocumented, it's a violation of civil law rather than criminal law. Is that correct?
Yes, if you enter the... Unless you're a minor, and you can't formulate an intent, sure. But if you're an adult, you enter the country, it's a civil law violation, yeah.
Is civil disobedience also a violation of civil law? Say a group occupies an administration building or...
Well, I've written an entire book on... Two books on the subject, if you want. "Defending Civil Resistance Under International Law" and "Protesting Power: War Resistance in Law." Yes, I've defended large numbers of people engaging in resisting illegal government policies, yes. But it all depends on the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
I was involved in the defense of the original founders of the sanctuary movement many years ago.
What I guess my submission would be that sometimes civil law has to be broken to correct an issue that perhaps was...
Well, again, it depends on the circumstances. For example, in many of these cases I've been involved in, we take the position that people do not have the criminal intent necessary to constitute a violation of the law, and that it's up to the government to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that they have that criminal intent.
Thank you.
But, you know, if you are interested, I'll send you my book. Actually.
Yeah, I feel... Now I'm a recipient of something valuable.
So I wanted to first make sure I'm clear about... So the resolution that whichever one we adopt, if we don't adopt the ordinance... Because I do want to make sure I'm very clear about the difference between the ordinance and the resolution, because one is, in effect, a city law, and one is an idea, right? And whether or not that idea is enforced or not, there's no... I want to get clarity on the enforcement. If an officer, for instance, does decide or mistakenly asks some of these particular questions or probes into the status of a person who has... Who is an immigrant, what is the violation if it's an ordinance and if it's a resolution? It's a policy violation if it's a resolution, but what if it's an ordinance?
Unfortunately, the Illinois Municipal Code, in terms of what powers the city council has, tends to use resolution and ordinance in certain areas interchangeably. In other areas of the municipal code, certain things, budget amendments, et cetera, they are required to be adopted by ordinance, not a resolution. So there is a confusion. It really depends on the intent. The other issue is typically, at least so far in this city, the ordinances are intended to govern conduct of the citizenry. We have used policy, and policy can be adopted by resolutions, to govern the conduct of city staff. For example, our policy and procedure manual governs many aspects, but primarily employee activity. So if a resolution becomes policy, city staff then, you know, must follow it. But there's always a question of whether the citizens... But in this case, with Sanctuary City, it's not an issue of citizen enforcement. It's an issue of government...
So if it's a resolution, then it's a policy violation if someone goes against it?
You know, it depends on the wording of the policy. If it's merely joining in or expressing an idea, then it's not enforceable as a specific policy. If it's stated as a policy and enforcement, which would include the two provisions that Professor Boyle includes, then that's something else. The key to this is, as Professor Boyle said, is whether that which is sought to be enforced is civil in nature or criminal in nature. And I believe, and you will correct me if I'm wrong, that in Arizona versus the United States, a Supreme Court opinion, the court held that it's not even clear yet whether a city or local municipality must enforce the civil... Or, excuse me, the criminal aspects of the immigration laws. But it is clear that they cannot be compelled to enforce the civil aspects. And the fact that somebody may be here, we use the term illegally, but here without authority and is, I believe the term that the cases use, is removable. The fact that they're here and they can be removable, that's a civil violation. And local police officers cannot be compelled to enforce civil violations. You don't see police officers in the city, for example, enforcing contract violations or slip and fall unless there's a criminal aspect. And criminal law is governed by criminal statutes.
Okay, so, thank you. I appreciate that. And I would just be being false to myself if I just didn't make some sort of statement about the irony of those who came here and took over and conquered a country that was occupied by native people to now call somebody else illegal. I think that's pretty ironic. If it wasn't so serious, it would be funny. The other thing is that I thought I saw in one of the ordinances that I read that the term "alien" was in something that I read. Are we replacing that entire piece with this, and that word would be removed, or not? I can't remember exactly. I saw something that I read, one of the other resolutions, in the opening paragraph. You saw it? Somebody else saw it as well? But that would... This resolution, the one... Whichever one of the two that we've... The most simplest one, so that the council could understand, we would... That one we would adopt. It would not have... It would replace any old one. Okay. I just want to make sure that that's clarified. All right. Thank you. Appreciate all the work that you've done on this.
Any other comments? Diane, could you take the chair? I do have just one follow-up question. I'm still trying to figure out the difference between the civil and criminal violations regarding immigration.
Mr. Madigan?
Thank you. Sorry. So aren't there two different terms that are used with regard to people who are here not having gone through the federally... not having gone through the federally prescribed immigration process? One would be improper entry, correct? And then another would be unlawful presence?
Those are civil crimes, right? Civil, sorry, civil offenses.
So improper entry would in fact be a misdemeanor.
Civil offense, I believe.
Yeah, well, okay. We can research that a little bit more, but I believe it's actually, it's a misdemeanor that's punishable by up to six months in prison, and also a fine. And then unlawful presence would be overstaying a visa and those type of things. So I think we ought to just take a good, hard look at just what we're talking about here. I don't think we're talking about civil offense in every case. I think we are talking about criminal offenses on a federal level. And I just think that ought to be cleared up before we, you know, make a final decision on all of this.
As the city attorney correctly pointed out, though, there's no obligation by Urbana to be enforcing federal immigration laws.
My question wasn't about what the local obligation was, it was about what is the federal, what is the federal offense? And I do believe there are two standards. I think there is unlawful entry, and then there is also, I'm sorry, there is improper entry, and there is also unlawful presence. And there are two different, one is criminal and one is civil.
Okay.
All right. So I'll take the chair back. Okay, so we have Karen Arum wishes to address, the member's at the time of the agenda item, so would you like to speak now or when the agenda item comes up? It's your choice.
When the agenda item comes up.
All right. Okay, that's at the time. Matt and Christine Rivers would like to register their support of adding additional police officers, but choose not to address the council at this time. And then, saving the best for last, I have a slip from Eric Jacobson, Citizen Jacobson, who wishes to address the council regarding sanctuary cities.
I'm gonna have to use this.
Sir. Thanks. I ask your indulgence to address you from this side of the table because I want to speak now, not as a council member, but I want to speak from my perspective as a professor and researcher at the University of Illinois. I had the great pleasure and privilege Saturday of putting the most recent PhD in biophysics and computational biology, who studied in my laboratory, who happens to be Muslim and happens to be from Turkey. And so those circumstances are of no particular note, except for the general atmosphere that has now been created about immigration and about Muslim immigration in particular. But I also would like to reflect that over the decades that I've been running a research group at the University of Illinois, students and post-docs have come to my group from Turkey I've mentioned, Pakistan, Korea, China, Colombia, Costa Rica. I've actually had far more people come from other countries, especially in the last couple of decades, than come from the United States. Because due to how our economy has gone, our educational system has gone, there are very, very many fewer Americans, young Americans, who want to pursue scientific research careers. And when we take the most qualified people to come into our graduate programs or to accept in our labs as post-docs, the majority now are coming from elsewhere. Now, why is that relevant to sanctuary? Well, I'll tell you something else about what I do. I'm a member of the Public Policy Committee of the Biophysical Society, and we have a big meeting, thousands of people come, thousands of scientists come, actually from all over the world, every February. And after the election, a significant number of people who are coming from other countries sent word that they were not coming. They're starting to boycott American scientific meetings. And I've also been told that this may have a big effect on whether young scientists will continue to want to come to pursue research training and research careers in the United States. I should add that many of my younger colleagues now, my, on the, who are professors, are from other countries. Our faculty has become increasingly international. Science, basic science, basic research, biomedical research is internationalized, totally. We are not, we don't do research in the United States independently, we do it interdependently with other countries. The other thing I should add is that based on the work of these people who've come from elsewhere, I have written grant proposals that have brought millions of dollars into this community, into this economy. And I'm not exceptional. This could be said of any of the research faculty at the University of Illinois. We have a big economic stake, the university does, but also our community does, in being a welcoming community. And it's not only a matter of morality, it's a matter of economic self-interest. The reason that you don't have a bunch of professors here is because frankly, the professors don't care at all about local politics. They totally take for granted the fact that our police protect them, that our public works provides the streets for them, that, and so on. And of course, we take for granted, people who aren't associated with the university tend to take for granted, all of the economic engine that the university provides. So I'm trying to, you know, be a bridge between these two perspectives and just...
We have one minute, Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you. And bring this perspective that from the university's point of view, I'm not an official, I wasn't designated by anybody else to bring this message to you, but I promise that the message I'm bringing is representative of many, many people at the university. So I just wanted to add that to the mix. Thank you.
There's anyone else who wishes to speak during the public input? Please step forward, but I don't have any slips for people requesting to speak prior to the agenda item. So is there anyone else?
I would, I'm Sage Johnson, and I'm a student at Urbana High School.
Okay, go right ahead.
I would like to advise the council to ensure that this policy is enforceable. As I just heard tonight, it seems that, oh, with the sanctuary cities, I'm very sorry, that this is something that you're asking of your officers to protect. And I also, I speak in support of the two sentences that were proposed to be added to this tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sage.
Okay, I think that concludes public input. We'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation regarding Pygmalion Festival.
How's everyone?
All right.
This is simply me coming and saying thank you for helping us along in 2016, our 12th year. It was a really exciting year for us. And as we are, want to do, we want to express that gratitude publicly and ask if you have any questions about how the event went and look for any feedback from that department.
Diane.
You want to summarize for us where the events in Urbana were held and how many people attended and over how long of a period of time?
Sure. As we discussed last spring, you know, it's, Pygmalion's an ever-changing event. After 12 years, it just keeps changing. And part of that is just market research, part of that's where the economy's at. And, you know, this year we ended up doing one event in Urbana on Monday, the 18th or 19th, at Sip Yard. And then we did a full day at Cranert Center for the Performing Arts in, on Thursday, the 22nd. And that was incorporated, all different components from the festival into one space in a really, a really special way. In partnership with the Department of English, we presented Urbana resident Jean Thompson, who's a National Book Award finalist. And in conjunction with Beckman Institute, we presented Dr. Robert Sapolsky, a MacArthur Fellow, who came to speak about neuroscience. And we had a really great turnout for all of them. It was a pretty exceptional mishmash of different people and, from different parts of the community, and certainly quite a bit of tourism as a result as well. We felt like it was a really successful event, and we really couldn't do that without the help of the city of Urbana.
Charlie.
So, the plans for next year?
Well, we felt like Thursday in particular was pretty phenomenal. Integrating the tech keynote speaker, although I think the word "tech" is officially a misnomer. I don't even know what that means anymore. It sounded good at the time, but I think it's got, I hate it, I gotta be honest, because I think it's just broader than that. Maybe we'll keep it, I don't know. I think it was a really nice mix of music, literature, and innovation or whatever, you know, speakers and thoughts and ideas and visions. And so we're gonna definitely do that again. Cranert has lent its support once again for a 12th consecutive year. And in discussion last year with the council, and in some private discussions outside of this, these chambers, you know, we want to find ways to integrate more Urbana business, more development, and in a discussion with JSM, who is the property owner and, I think they're the property, yeah, of Gregory Place, right next to Cranert Center, we're going to do a very strong activation to incorporate them and the businesses as part of the broader day. Neutral Cycle, which has their design studio in Gregory Place, led a really interesting bike ride from Blue Waters in Research Park through Urbana, Meadowbrook Park, stopped at Sip Yard for a beer, and then ended up at Cranert Center. And we actually got one of the headlining bands that night, Frightened Rabbit from Scotland, to participate. And we thought that was really cool, and if you go to the Neutral Cycle page or the Pygmalion page, you can see a video documentation of that. And so they put that out there on social media, and it did really well.
Eric.
So I think Sapolsky was an absolutely inspired choice for science speaker. And for, in case anybody's interested, he has written a terrific book that has the same title as his talk, Why Zebras Don't Get Ulcers. And, but, I have, I could talk to you elsewhere, maybe you have some ideas for comparable people to bring next year, but I could also share some thoughts about that.
I totally appreciate that, Eric, and I would love to sit up here and be like, "Thank you. I did a lot of research and that invitation was, well, that was all Beckman." All that being said, that's kind of what Pygmalion has grown into in a lot of ways over the course of time, which is to say that as we expand the scope of the cultural element, I don't think that I have any pretense about the idea that I don't know about certain topics more than other people. And so working with an organization like Beckman to bring a speaker like Dr. Sapolsky to the table is really what this is all about for me, in that I want it to be a showcase. And I think over time, the other components, literature certainly, and food, will bring that same element as, you know, as the years go on. There is a name that's been floated by them this year, I can't say it, but it's like, it's like Household, which is crazy. I had heard of them, and I was like, you know, that'd be awesome. I think there'd be some, you know, a lot of fanfare and probably some protesters, which would be dope.
Great, sounds great.
Diane.
Wouldn't be Urbana without some protesters, right?
Well, hey, life is big, you know, we gotta, you know, this is in DC.
Well, I attended, I attended most of the events at Cranert that Thursday. It was, the festival theater was packed to overflowing for the talk by Dr. Sapolsky. And the lobby, you didn't mention, it was a tech, it was a, what, an expo, a technology expo, and it was very, very, very well-attended. So as far as your venue for this year, I think it's much better than trying to do it in downtown Urbana like you did last year, and just concentrate everything at Cranert, and that was a really good choice.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
But you should count, you know, you should...
Oh, the number of people?
Yeah, you should bring some numbers.
Yeah, I know, I actually, I know how many people are there.
Okay, how many?
Actually, I don't know how many people are there.
You don't?
Which is to say that I have a rough estimate, which is, we estimated 3,500 people on that day, which is to say there's a number of seats and we can tell how many tickets we sold, and then we take an estimate based on number of people per square foot, and we did that with Cranert. So 3,500 people that day, which is really, certainly the best we've ever done at Cranert Center. And, you know, the tech demo was 16 different local innovators and inventors, robotics, virtual reality, video gaming, all in one space. And putting that in the evening, backed up by the speaker and the artists, made for a really nice engagement. In addition to that, we also partnered with the University of Illinois Library to do an event called the Human Library, which was actually unbelievably engaging. It was kind of confusing when it was proposed to me, but I thought I'd give this a shot. It was 10 different tables set up and 10 different topics, and each top, each table was a book, and that book was a human. And you could choose that book, and they'd give you cue cards, you'd ask questions, and they'd engage you in a story. So it was really, really cool. So that's the plan for next year, is to do that again and expand upon that in some significant ways. You know, if you remember part of the agreement, part of the sponsorship that we asked for is inclusive of infrastructure from public works. Without that, we, you know, it's a huge deal for us. I don't know if anyone here really understands festival production and activation the way that I do, but it's a tremendous gift and we're very, very honored to have that.
Any further questions? All right, thank you.
Okay.
So the next agenda item is additional police personnel. Mayor.
I will be brief. I would like to respond to some of the concerns that have been expressed. First of all, there is no zero cost alternative. If we don't do anything, that is still going to cost the people who may get shot or killed. And the concern about the fiscal year, doing something in the midst, in the middle of the fiscal year, I can tell you that the people that are doing the shooting don't care what part of the fiscal year we are in. And looking back at why we've had a financial problem, not only did we have a recession and... and lose the hospital property taxes, but also, I wrote you a memo in October 2015 about the request for additional MetCAD funding. And I said, "Four years ago, Met, our MetCAD payment was 326, 27,000, roughly the current cost of three police officers. Now they're asking for 682,000, the current cost of six police officers. And in addition, we're not getting our revenue from the state because the state doesn't have a budget." And one of the things that they held up was the payments to 911 centers. So if that gets straightened out, the current law, which gives us 87 cents a phone line and gives Chicago $3.90 a phone line, is going to expire this coming year and it's going to have to be rewritten. And I'm certainly pushing for us to get at least what our voters approved, which was $1.50. And also, the concern about if the, if the hospital, if we don't win the hospital lawsuit, that we're going to have to cut our budget by a million dollars. Right now, our budget has been cut. So really, the alternative, if we lose it, we're not going to be any different than we are right now. But if we win it, we will have more money. So we will give you a more complete report in January, giving you some other revenue possibilities that are out there. But I do think the hotel motel tax, the studies that we've done in conjunction with the Urbana Lincoln Hotel, show that that is a pretty flexible thing that does not really affect the patrons or the businesses that much. And some hotels are slapping on extra fees, so the hotel motel tax is a relatively small thing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we'll really talk about it in January.
Diane, then Dennis.
A couple of comments. First of all, I would like to say, I, I do support addition of the five officers to the police force and adequately staffing the police force, but my concerns remain on finding a reliable and long-term way of paying for it. I did want to share a couple of communications that I received from the local hotel motel industry. The first was from the president of the CU Hotel and Lodging Association. She called, or she contacted me this afternoon. She expressed the following, "We were not notified or consulted about the increase. There was no attempt to see how we think this increase might impact our industry. The tax increase would put Urbana hotels at a disadvantage against the area hotels. It would increase, create additional costs for our guests and they would choose hotels with lower tax rates. It's unfair that our industry alone is being proposed to fund this expenditure. It's not sustainable. Our market was down this year. Revenue and taxes generated were not what was projected. If the market continues to decline, and then money will have to be borrowed from something else to help pay for the officers. Find sustainable funding," and she recommended during the regular budgeting session." And then we, and she also is the general manager of the Holiday Inn Express in Urbana. And we also received communication from the Comfort Suites in Urbana. She expressed many of the same thoughts. She also said that "We've been managers at the Comfort Suites for over six years, have seen the struggles Urbana hotels have had to overcome to compete with champagne hotels. When the last tax increase took place a few years ago," she goes on to say, "They had numerous state-funded groups that chose to stay in champagne because of a 1% tax difference." That would be a 1 percentage point tax difference. "It may not seem like much when you're talking about an extra 2 cents per dollar, but when you are talking about a $50,000 corporate account that now has to pay an additional $1,000 to stay at a hotel in Urbana, they will choose champagne. Urbana hotels are already at a disadvantage to champagne hotels because 2/3 of Urbana hotels lack a selection of business and restaurants within walking distance to the hotels on North Lincoln Avenue. They are appreciative of the officers of the Urbana PD. They have been gracious and accommodating and helping us when the need arises. However, we believe there must be a better place for funds to come from because we believe raising the tax percentage will have a long-lasting effect on the travel industry in Urbana. How can restaurants, bars, retail stores expect to profit if the hotels aren't able to secure travelers to the area because the taxes are higher?" And I won't, she goes on to comment on the Historic Landmark Hotel, but that's a topic for a different day. The bottom line is, the, the, we need a sustainable and long-term way to pay for this, and I think this needs to be considered in the context of the entire budget, rather than targeting one particular industry and proposing to use a temporary savings in health insurance premiums. And that's why I continue to say, let's take some short-term measures in the next few months for increased security and safety in the neighborhoods that need it the most, specifically Aspen Court, Lehman Avenue, and Vodder Street. And we've proposed several things already. And, and look for a long-term way to fund the additional officers and bring our police up to the staffing that it should be. And it should have been done over the last five or six years on a gradual basis. And it would have been a little easier to handle, but we are where we are today. So I would just like us to hold off on targeting one particular industry that really has seen softening revenues in the past couple of years. Our own budget projections, our tax revenues from the hotel motel tax have fallen short of our own projections the last couple of years. So that's, again, why I think we should be doing this when we put together the regular budget.
Dennis.
Well, I've had conversations with some people in my wards that, my ward that have indicated to me that there are concerns about the community's safety and they do support hiring five officers. They didn't make any condition to me about, you know, when or to what degree officers needed to be added, but they just said that they do feel that there was a need for having more officers, you know, in the community to assist the current police officers. And one member in HUNA also offered an interesting idea, which he did share with some of us. Specifically, he said that he believed that it would be better to pair officers two together in the same car for periods when the most calls of response come in. These double-ups would be fluidly positioned by the shift commanders. Recently reported cases of officers being killed in cars and negative accounts of police action are the main two drivers for that idea. I have to wonder how much more comfortable in their jobs and capable of measured response our officers might be with a dedicated partner, another person who bounces off ideas to consult with about actions and to share responsibilities. The officer's comfort level is a valuable commodity, one which hopefully relates to the community comfort level and also the quality of response work. Critics might suggest that we cannot afford providing a doubling up, but I think that one citizen provided better service with less chance of mistakes and errors. And the resultant lessening of liability to the city makes the gamble worth taking. So this comment was that he'd like to see officers in pairs during the high-crime moments or the evening shifts where so many more calls for service occur.
Bill, then Eric.
Yeah, I think we have a very professional police department and I do support addition of some additional police. I don't think that the hotel motel tax is the way to go for many of the same reasons that some of the people that wrote to us said. And if you look at our hotel motel tax revenue over the past couple of years, it's down below what we were anticipating. So I think it, our hotel industry is not healthy in Urbana and I don't think this is the way to make it healthier. As far as the police go, I, I don't know, I don't, the main thing that bothers me, I think, is that we're, we're already short four officers, from what I understand from the memos, besides the ones that are on temporary absence because of injuries or military leave. So if, we need to at least get up to where we can always have the number available that we need available to cover the minimum shifts. And if it means that we'll have to increase the total authorized number of officers in order to anticipate those shortages every year that occur, then, then that's what we need to do. I also feel that even though crime hasn't increased significantly, the, the nonviolent crime, the property crime has increased somewhat, the violent crime over the past few years has been trending down. Sure, it comes in rashes and when we get these rashes of crime, everybody wants action. And so, I can understand the mayor's timing on this. But we also, we also require more training of our police officers now. Not only the crisis intervention training, which is real time-consuming, and I've noticed that in the, the incident reports, they are using their training. There are more crisis intervention calls and those take time to handle. And that's a good thing, that we're shifting some of those things that used to be criminal things that were, people would be taken to jail. Now they're handled on a more personal level and, and maybe people are getting the help at the hospitals or wherever they end up going after talking, after the crisis intervention. So that kind of training, there's also the bias training that's required by the state and bias training we've been doing on our own, partially in the response to all of our discussions over the I dot traffic stop. I hope that the police don't consider that an attack on them. I think they're professional enough to know that we have high expectations and if we're losing police officers, it would be my thought that they're being hired away from Urbana because they are highly trained and they are highly professional and we do have high expectations. And those types of police officers are in high demand right now. People have had the bias training, they've had the crisis intervention training. So if that's, if that's why we're losing officers, I don't feel bad about it. It's, you know, it's just that, you know, that, that could be one of the reasons. So I guess in short, I'd support some increase, maybe a gradual increase, but the main thing is to get, get us back up to full staffing so we don't have those vacancies. But I, I do think we need to find it, find a different way to pay for it other than the hotel motel taxes.
Eric.
So I, I'm going to join the choir here. I cert, over the last several years, our police staffing has not kept up with population growth and we have not increased staffing to compensate for the reduced cooperation that we're able to receive from state police. But I also believe that we have to have a, a recurring, a recurring revenue source. I suggest, I'm going to reiterate a suggestion I made on the other occasion when we discussed this, and that is that we could find a recurring source for, I think, maybe one and a half police officers by moving the social service funding, social service agency funding that we currently pay for out of the city budget to the, to the township. State statutes say, I mean, according to state statutes, we can't have the township pay for police officers. That's not within their, their domain of what they're allowed to do. But they are allowed to contract or grant social service agencies in order to provide that kind of need. And we've all, also heard that the township budget is, is, is healthy and could absorb this more readily. And, and of course, it's the same people. I mean, once a month, the same people, maybe not everybody knows, once a month, this same cast of characters meets as the Township Board of Trustees and the Chair of that board. And then we, you know, change our identities and we meet as the City Council and the Mayor. So we can effect that. I think it's, it's technically possible. And I would urge us to do that immediately. That will give us, right away, during this fiscal year, the ability to move partly towards what we want to do. And then consider seriously other revenue streams that we can count on as recurring to meet what I think is a long-term need for a larger police force than we have now.
Aaron.
So first of all, just to work backwards, I guess, I certainly would not vote for taking any money from social services to give to any other entity or the department at this point. I think that we have been lacking in our service to those who are in most need in our community. I do not agree with that and I know that there's been some cost savings that have taken place recently under our current township supervisor. But I think looking deeply into that, we'll see that some people were still in deep need. So the money that we see being saved there, I do not think that it is a, a place that I would support trying to find some other funding. People in my ward have come to me and said that they think that we need more presence in the community from the police officers. So I'm not opposed to some sort of increase that is taken into consideration when we do the budget. I too disagree with it happening in the middle of the year, especially for $500,000. I mean, we're talking about a half million dollars of recurring funds that we would have to pay every year and we decide to do that on a, on a, in the middle of the year. That's something that we could have certainly thought about and planned when we were doing the budget early on. So yes, I'm aware of all of the shootings and things that are taking place, but I think it's, you know, again, we continue to try to say that if there's more police on the streets, then these shootings won't take place. Look, if somebody wants to do something to someone, they wait for the police to leave and then they do it. So it's not like more police officers, all of a sudden, you know, stop shootings from taking place. That is just a falsity and we should stop spreading that. The presence, I think one of the ladies who spoke last Monday about panhandling, certainly I do think the presence of police makes the community or make people feel a little bit safer. And I do think with more officers being present or patrolling, you may have that, that, that feeling. So I understand that. I would like to see, you know, exactly how the time is being spent. A couple of the wives who have come and, and spoke here tonight, and I appreciate your comments, spoke about the different aspects of policing and how it has changed. Well, I think we should spend more money addressing how policing has changed and the reasons why it has changed, right? The mental health issues that we described, that, the homelessness that we see in our community, where Danielle Chinieweck spoke to when she was here last week, that we don't even have a homeless shelter, a place for people to go who are homeless, who are going to commit, who have the potential of committing crimes or civil violations. So, you know, I do think we should take our time and look at this when the time is right, when we are working on the budget. I do have concerns about the hotel motel tax being higher, the point about $50,000. When there's an extra $1,000 added to it, it does make a difference. I think those are things we do have to consider. So I do not support, at this point, the addition of, of any officers until we can find a way to pay for them sustainably. And I do not, again, support it coming from the social services.
Okay, so Charlie was next, but Eric, it's up to you guys. You duke it out.
Okay, go ahead, Eric. I'd like to just respond. I'm not proposing, my proposal does not reduce funding for social services. It just moves the funding sour, oh, the funding source from the city budget to the township budget. And indeed, I think that because of the relative health of the township budget, that might provide an ability that we don't have now, we could look at that, of actually increasing the social service funding.
Charlie.
Well, actually, to that, I, you know, my best guess, looking at the financials for the township, is that there are about $400,000 in funds above and beyond us, a, a balance that you should keep in the township budget for the fluctuations that we see in the GA and so on. And that was the point of my, my comments last week on this issue, that there's extra money there, above and beyond, and we're in danger of being sued by taxpayer to refund that money unless we put it to use. Now, moving that money out of GA takes a special, it takes, it has to be done, as I understand, at the annual meeting or a spe, or maybe potentially a special meeting. So we'll have to figure that, figure that out. So I don't know that it's instantaneous. My real point, though, my real concern, though, is, is that we haven't, we have a problem right now in that our police department is stressed. They're fatigued. You can't do a good job when you're stressed and fatigued. For whatever reason, you know, there have been a lot of demand- For whatever reason, you know, there have been a lot of demands out there, we have a lot of injuries at the moment and so on. So we, you know, we, we do need to beef that up and address that. So I'll, I'll be looking for, you know, my concern is that in addition to all the other costs that were mentioned by spouses, there's the other cost, which is the liability that we have if somebody makes a mistake on, on, on city time. So, so that's another one, and we know how much that's cost Chicago, for example. So, so that's another cost out there that could, could occur immediately. So, so I will look forward to what the mayor proposes in January of, of revenue sources that are sustainable and so on. So I think it's not a matter of waiting for the budget. If we can come up with funding sources now, we should do it, be it social, be it, be it an excess in the GA, be it something else in the city, be it a new revenue source, we should try to address it as soon as we possibly can.
Aaron?
So the 400,000 that you spoke to is still a, it's a surplus. So it's not a recurring fund that we would be able to, to, to use to pay $500,000 in salaries, okay? Right, right, and then we'd be right back in the same position again. So, and again, I think we could have done a lot more to serve those who are in need in our community with that 400,000 than we've been doing thus far. So I did want to also, because I heard some comments earlier as we were, as the people were speaking, I think a couple of the wives were speaking in relationship to the police officers and, and the work that's taking place or the, the stress that they are under and the morale and things like that. And I do think it's something that's important for us to, to pay attention to, whether it's fire department, police department, public works or whatever. We do have to make sure that folks are able to do their jobs and are able to do it in the, in the most professional way and they have the tools necessary. Now, I might disagree with some of the tools that they carry on their belt, because I don't see them as tools, I see them as weapons, but I, I understand the need to be able to do your job. Now, one of the comments that was made that I found important to respond to is that somehow all officers are being painted as racist, right? And I don't think that is at all true, that the entire department is being painted as racist. I do believe that there's implicit bias, that's the politically correct term that we're using nowadays that exists, for racist perspectives or stereotypical ideas or mentalities that individuals have. I do not think it's possible for me as a man to live in a society that is a patriarchal society and heavily dominated by males and to not have some remnants of sexism within me when I speak. So I find it amazing that someone, that a officer, especially someone who is a white officer coming from a small town, does not have any residue of prejudice or racism that they may espouse while they're doing their job, but let's call it implicit bias. So I do think that that is a part of the job, it needs to be addressed, and it's there, the data shows it's there. The stories, the, the testimonies from African-American drivers all show that it's there. So if we're going to move forward in good faith, then I think we should all be very honest about what we're dealing with and the problems and concerns that we face, from staffing levels to the implicit bias that shows up in African-Americans or people of color being stopped at a higher rate than they should be based upon the driving population or the accidents that they have, Melissa, wherever she might be. So, thank you.
Bill?
I just wanted to add, add a couple of things about, one of the questions that was raised was how are we aware of how police do their jobs? And I have done a ride along, I think most of the council have probably done ride alongs before. The other way we have of getting feedback and input is from the chief himself, he'll send out emails now and then, kind of updating us, especially when there's been a rash of incidents. And I was real impressed about a month or two ago when we got one, well, actually it was several different times, I guess, but I think over a short period of time, there were three instances where our officers actually disarmed somebody that was armed and could have turned out much differently. So I think we're very aware of how good of a job the officers do and what kind of risks they take, so just wanted to let you know that.
Eric?
So the, I mentioned Sapolsky's book, and one of the things that becomes very clear is that when people are stressed and they're up for 16 hours, 23 hours they're working and they're trying their very best to do their very best, but they can't, they absolutely can't, it's just not humanly possible. So, and, and may make mistakes, get injured, or at least not function up to their full capacity. So I think it's very possible that we, that when we add police officers and the stress level goes down, the fraction of officers who will be out of commission will also go down. So I think it's another reason for, for adding more officers.
Okay, any further comments? All right, we'll move on. So the next agenda item is I dot traffic stop discussion. Nice segue.
Okay, I'll start the show.
You're all receiving.
So I asked Bob Fitzgerald, since Bob sat in with all of you on the one-on-ones or the two-on-twos, to maybe answer some of the fundamental questions that you have as well as what Melissa's most recent update involves. So she'll share that information. This is being brought back to you because of a number of questions that were asked by the city council folks. Alex is gonna then address the continuing effort of the police and then, and the city working toward the I dot traffic study and the goals that are associated with it, and then I'll answer any policy issues that might be brought up at the end. But for now, I'll let these guys take it.
All right, so this is a follow-up from the previous report that is available on the website. You all have received copies of the presentation, this will also be available on the website. So this is addressing the questions that have arisen from the meetings that we had and also some questions that we received via email. Since our last presentation, we've made a number of accomplishments. We've established monthly meetings between human relations and Urbana Police. We've established a crime analysis at urbanaillinois.us email address to field requests or questions from, from the public. We've talked extensively about the motivation and how to gather some pretextual and other stops information, and we've, we've decided to add a beyond scope checkbox to all of the I dot stickers. So if someone is stopped for a community caretaking or a traffic issue and then there are further questions that arise and it goes beyond the scope of a traffic stop, the officer will check that box and will be able to, to do analysis on that if, you know, the traffic stop goes beyond, beyond a traffic stop. We held meetings individually with, with council members. We've released a request for proposals for the crime mapping program that I'll need to do some further spatial analysis, and we're hoping to have that up and running after the February or early part of next year. At the end of the presentation that will be available on the website, I've attached details on step, the motivation for stop descriptions, as well as the traffic stop policy. And I did want to note that all of the Urbana Police Department policies are available on the website and that will be linked, and then I have additional analysis to present to you tonight. All right, so I had multiple questions about the age of the driver. So I broke down all of the traffic stops for the past five years. You can see that we predominantly stop a large proportion of younger drivers. I broke it down by age, or by, by race, by age, and it looks a bit skewed. So I overlaid it with the benchmark, so with the, the agree upon benchmark that represents the driving population would be the, the number of accidents. So when we, when we overlay that, indicates that young African-American, Caucasian and Hispanic drivers are more likely to be stopped based on the estimated driving populations and older drivers are less likely, likely to be stopped based on the driving populations, but it looks generally pretty straight, straightforward. Looking at the reason for stop, we talked previously about the, the step or the selective traffic enforcement program that is, is determined based on numerous, you know, public input and where, where traffic accidents are taking place. We'd received questions about the motivation for those stops and most of the step stops, I think 97% are for moving violations. We see some of the equipment violations and license and registration violations occurring in the non-step stops or when officers are patrolling. And so overall, about 31% are step stops and 69% are non-step stops. I've broken down the disparity ratio by step and non-step, and you can see that Asian drivers are less likely to be stopped based on the driving population for step, African-Americans more likely, Hispanic about equal, Caucasian about equal. The disparity changes a bit when we go into the non-step stops. Asian drivers are more likely to be stopped than the driving population, African-Americans 1.74, Hispanic 1.13, and then Caucasians are less likely to be stopped based on the estimated driving population using the, the accident data.
Hold on a second, can we just pause for a second?
Yes.
To make sure that everyone understands and that I fully understand, but I would imagine some other folks don't understand the difference between step and non-step.
Yeah, so the strategic.
The strategic, selective, program, it's a, it's a thing that's put together, Mike Mattigan's in charge of the traffic commission, we look for areas, Sergeant Charles looks for areas where we have a lot of complaints or a lot of traffic accidents, and what we do is we have officers working that area, running radar, looking at stop signs, checking for people that are using their cell phones and things like that. So it's selective area that we look at and we put officers in that area just to work on that problem. And what they'll do is they'll make stops and write tickets and all that, and most of that is all traffic related.
And that's what step is?
That's what step is.
So non-step is outside of that?
Non-step is just regular patrol.
Okay.
We also had some questions about the duration of stop. I broke it down by outcome, so warning only averages a little bit less than 10 minutes, citations a little bit more than 10 minutes, and then more serious, something that's more serious than a traffic violation elevates it above 20. You see that the highest to lowest difference between warnings between races is about one minute, citations, the difference between highest and lowest is about three minutes, and then more serious, the difference is about six minutes between the highest and lowest for the demographics of the driver. This is a little bit tricky, the, some of the numbers for the more serious violations are really small, so for Asian drivers, we're looking at 26 stops. So if one of them runs 60 minutes, 80 minutes, that's gonna skew, skew all of that.
So what does that actually mean to the person sitting at home? You're saying that the numbers that we see on the graph for Asian drivers really is overrepresented, I mean, how do you explain that?
It's, it's the average of all traffic stops that have elevated to something more serious than a traffic stop, so something that, that is beyond a traffic citation or a traffic warning. And that's the average duration of the stop, and when we're looking at Asian and Hispanic drivers, we're looking at a very small number. So if one stop lasts an inordinate amount of time or one stop lasts a not very much amount of time, it has the potential to really skew that data.
So you said for Asian drivers, you said it was how many stops, did you say 26?
26, yeah.
And for Hispanic, was how many?
I think it was 74, 72.
And so for Caucasian and African-American, what numbers are we looking at there?
I do not have that noted, but I'm happy to send that to you later.
Is it a significantly higher number?
Yes. Yes.
So just a quick note, since we're paused at this point anyway, it would be pretty straightforward to add the box plot to the bars so that you would, which would give, how, you know, the, and so for anybody who doesn't know what the box plot is, that would give, it would give the, the boundary of the top quarter and the bottom quarter, so that would give you an idea of the variability as well as the average.
I appreciate that. All right, so looking at the outcome of the stops, I've broken it down, looking at only citations and warnings, I've excluded anything that's more serious for a traffic violation. So we're looking at, the top one, we're looking at the racial breakdown, Asian is in blue, African-Americans in green, Hispanics in purple and Caucasians in orange. And of those drivers that are pulled over, this is the percentage that receive traffic violations, that receive a citation or a warning. I've then calculated the disparity ratio of outcomes using the stopped population as the, as the baseline, and it's, it's pretty equal across, again, with the Hispanic population, we've got a much lower number, they represent only 4% of the stops, so that's, it's highly variable. But we're, we're pretty, looking pretty good with Asian, African-American and Caucasian hovering very close to the 1.0 line. I'd received some questions on the number of citations per stop, and this gets a little tricky, so I'll ask you to follow along here. Of the people that receive citations and warnings, 43% receive only a warning, 46% receive only one citation, 5% receive a citation and a warning on the same ticket, and 6% receive more than one citation on one ticket. Looking at just the citations, 88% will receive one citation, 11% will receive two citations and less than 2% will receive three or more citations per ticket. Looking at the 5% box, so the ones that receive a citation and a warning, this is the racial breakdown. So of the 5%, you have 42% are African-American, 43% Caucasian, 8% Asian, 7%. So this is, we're looking at 874 stops here. Of the 6% that receive more than one citation, or 918 individuals, 36% are African-American, 42% Caucasian, 11% Hispanic and 11% Asian. So that's the, the short of it. Most people will receive just one warning or citation.
So does that say that the, I, I noticed one of the numbers you said on the prior page was that the Hispanic population would not be a good number, it would be, that's gonna create a, however statisticians talk about it, don't really use that number, that's what you're really saying, right?
Right.
All right, so it shows that for citations, Asians, Asian-Americans or Asian drivers would be right on point, they get a citation, one, what does the one mean? I don't know if I understand what that means.
One citation?
No, where it says disparity ratio of outcomes.
Oh, okay, so based on the number of Asian-Americans that we stop when you're considering it, that's, that's the baseline. So the number that we're stopping is the denominator and we're dividing it by the percentage of individuals that receive a citation. So we're looking, so if we stop 10% Asian and 10% of Asians are receiving the citations, that's a 1.0 ratio. So they're just as likely as the driving population, just as expected.
And so it shows that African-Americans actually get less citations by four.
4%, yeah. 4% less likely than we would expect.
But we receive more multiple citations than we should reasonably expect or not?
Yes, but it's a small number, so we would expect, without the math, about 28% would be the disparity ratio. So that would be the denominator, so whatever, 42% divided by 28%. percent.
So, I just wanted to make sure-
So yes, more likely to receive a citation than we would expect. A citation and a warning, together.
And so, and, uh, it looks like Asian Americans also would receive more?
Um, slightly less.
Slightly less, and what about Hispanic?
Slightly more.
And Caucasian?
Slightly less.
Okay.
Similar for the multiple citations as well.
Okay, all right.
For each of those, though, we're talking about five percent and six percent, so combined eleven percent of traffic stops. Okay, and then looking at the drivers that were stopped three or more times over three years, so anything more than an average of once or more a year. This was, the twelve thousand stops were considered, seventy-five percent of drivers were stopped one time, fifteen percent were stopped two times, and then eight percent of the stops were for people that were stopped three or more times. So we're looking at three hundred individuals that had been stopped three or more times in three years. So we're looking at a thousand stops. Two hundred and six of the stops were step stops, four hundred and eight of the stops, so about forty percent resulted in a warning only. And then ninety-six percent of the stops had at least one of the charges that are, that are presented here. These are the charges that are resulting from the stops, not the reason for the stop. So you're not stopped because you're driving an uninsured vehicle, you're stopped for something else, and then this is one of the charges that results from it.
Okay, this is just a lot of, of, of stuff, and I know that you do this every day, so it all makes sense to you, but it, so three, how many nine hundred people you said stopped three or more times?
Two hundred and ninety-eight people.
Two hundred and ninety-eight people, okay.
Stopped three or more times for a total of a thousand six stops. Over three years.
In three years, okay. And is there a racial breakdown for this one?
Um, that was presented in the first one. It's more likely to be African American than, than we would expect. I think it's forty-something percent. I don't have that presented here, but it's in the previous one.
Okay, so that sort of correlates with this page, the, the one that I was talking, asking you about earlier.
No, that's, it's a different.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's in the previous report.
From the previous report, okay. Yeah.
Okay, and then finally, looking at the arrests from traffic stops by race. So we were looking at twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and then through November thirtieth of twenty-sixteen. So this is, I'm looking at twenty-fourteen on because of the, the policy change that we no longer arrest people for some things that we used to arrest them for. So this is more representative of what's happening now. So you can see a pretty small number of individuals result in something that's more serious than a traffic stop, and then a, a small percentage of that result in an arrest. So a hundred and seven arrests in twenty-fourteen, a hundred and nine arrests in twenty-fifteen, and fifty-one arrests so far in twenty-sixteen. It should be noted that this represents both drivers and passengers, so eighty percent of the resulting arrests are of drivers and twenty percent are of passengers. So that's represented in the racial breakdown here. So looking at it a little bit closer, I pulled all of the charges from the police reports. This is different, so the top ones, I'm counting the number of people, the bottom ones, I'm counting the charges. So nine, overall, ninety-two percent of individuals were arrested for, for nondiscretionary charges. So they had at least one of the following on there. So there was either a warrant, a DUI, or a revoked license, was, which is a nondiscretionary arrest, and about twenty percent had other nondiscretionary arrest charges. Only seven point eight percent individuals were arrested on discretionary charges. That's twenty-one individuals over about three years. Twelve of those had more than one charge that was more serious than a traffic violation.
Is that what discretionary means?
Discretionary arrests are ones that the officer really doesn't have any discretion on what he does. Like if he stops a felon with a weapon, he can't just write a ticket and let that person go, he has to arrest that person. A nondiscretionary would be something like a theft where he can write him a ticket and send him on their way.
That's the back, that's the other way around.
I'm sorry, I got that backwards. Sorry about that. Nondiscretionary would be the-
Okay, so that concludes all of the, the new information that I was presenting tonight. Any questions now or later can be emailed?
Well, Melissa, I thank you for all of the work that you do, but that's really fast and a lot for me and I think other people to try to digest. So can you, in a nutshell, your, your report and these things are showing that there's still, there's a clear discrepancy or a disparity?
Yes, there is a disparity in, in the drivers that we are stopping. So we are more likely than expected to stop African American drivers, slightly more likely than expected to stop Asian drivers at about seven percent more than we would expect. Less likely to stop Caucasian drivers and slightly more likely, about ten percent to stop Hispanic drivers. The African American ratio is one point five eight, so fifty-eight percent more likely to be stopped than we would expect based on the driving population using traffic accidents.
So when we look at the citations-
Yep.
I'm trying to find that chart.
So when we're looking at the citations, we're looking at, so the disparity to, of the stops is the decision to stop. So the, you know, before somebody is stopped, the outcome is after somebody is stopped. So we're looking at, you know, we know the universe of who was stopped, so that's what we're comparing to. So once you're stopped, what happens? And there's, there's not a disparity once somebody is stopped. The disparity is, is in the, in the stop itself.
Well, from my perspective, I'm, I'm drawn to a study that I read many years ago called White Boys Loaded, where it showed that significantly higher numbers of Caucasian males, whatever particular age range, were found to be in possession of paraphernalia far more than any other ethnic group. And I'm just saying to the police department, if it looks like citations that are issued, African Americans are less likely to get citations, yet more likely to be stopped, doesn't seem to be adding up to me. Am I misunderstanding something?
You're asking, I'm, I'm, can you repeat that? You're asking if we're more likely to arrest them or stop them?
Well, the citation itself, right, just from a straight up traffic stop standpoint, the citations, the data that she's presenting now says that we're less likely to actually get a citation of all the other, of the, three other or four other ethnic groups.
So this is excluding something that's more serious than a traffic violation?
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is just citations and warnings only. This is excluding any case that elevates to something more serious than a traffic violation, and that's presented in the original report. And I, I don't remember the, the numbers for that offhand.
Okay. Eric? So are you planning to normalize these data by geocode and geocode where we look at calls for service in that geocode? And, and I guess the, the context is just for everybody, what I'm looking for is how much of racial disparity may be due to more intense policing in geocodes that, where there are more calls for service as opposed to, well, implicit bias, let's say.
Yes. I'm, I would be working with MetCAD to help differentiate between officer-initiated and citizen-initiated calls for service. And once I have the mapping software, I'll be able to do that with more rigor.
Okay, great. Dennis?
Melissa, on page nine, the graph that talks about charges for drivers that are stopped for-
Yes.
Three or more times. It's, seems interesting to me that, that having faulty headlights is more seriously considered than speeding and other causes for stops. Is there anything that, Janet Fitzgerald, you want to like address that?
Well, the headlights, the headlights, drug people driving at night, they'll stop them for one headlight or two headlights out. There's indicators for that. So most of the time, it's a caretaking, education thing, you need to get the headlight fixed or you need to turn your headlights. If there's a second, and a person didn't stop more than once, if the officer sees that, they're going to stop that person for a headlight. It's a common traffic stop that officers do, mostly for no headlights, but they'll also stop them for one headlight. A lot of times, people forget to put on their headlights, it's a safety issue, so they'll stop them for that.
I, I understand.
The speeding one, I think this is more than, you're more likely, if you see, if someone's out with not having a headlight and they're not getting it fixed, if I see one month and I give you a warning, I'll stop you a second time to see what you're doing to do, get that taken care of when it's one headlight out. So I could see why that's more of a stop than speeding, because speeding's more, for this, speeding's usually a one-time thing. An officer will run radar and stop them, they won't be stopping them a second time for that. Usually the education, if you're getting a ticket during the speeding, makes you alter your, alter what you're doing, makes you conform to what the speeding laws are.
It seems like there would be an educational component that would advise people to get their car, their car in shape to avoid being stopped multiple times and have their life become a little more harmonious.
That, the officer does, when they do stop, if you look at our traffic stops, they do educate them on that, they tell them, you need to get this headlight fixed, I'm going to give you a warning this time, but you really need to get this taken care of. Some people take our advice.
The times you're out, then, apparently.
And so sometimes it's a financial thing, trying to get that, I, getting it, some of these headlights, people have to take in, there's a lot to do with it, but most of the times, people will conform to that and do that device. They see you a second time, that officer gave you a warning one time, they're bound to stop you a second time for that.
Yeah.
The data support that. I ran an alternate model where I looked at it, it's a shorter timeframe, and the first stop, you're more likely to get a warning, the second stop, you're more likely to get a citation, and the third stop, you, you're pretty much getting a citation.
It seems like a frivolous reason to be stopped, not from the point of view, the law or the oncoming car, which may not understand exactly what lane you're, you're driving in, but for the individual, it seems like a small thing to be taken to court eventually for. Okay, thanks.
That's why most of the times, they usually use that as a caretaking the first time and give you a warning, give you a chance to get that taken care of.
Bill?
I guess on that same chart, it would be kind of interesting to have an equivalent bar graph of the overall population of, of the people that were just stopped once, say, to see how that compares to this. So is this, is this, if headlights are, represent, say, twenty percent of this population of stops, does it also represent twenty percent of, of everybody else's stops? But it does, on the uninsured is the second highest, so I'll ask about that one. If, if someone has stopped without insurance once, and then an officer maybe recognizes the car or, or knows that he's stopped that person with, without insurance before, or maybe they call on the plates and they realize that that person had been stopped without insurance, does that make them more likely to be stopped again, just check to see if they got their insurance?
A vast majority of the insurance tickets are mostly after another, it's a headlight out or speeding, they don't, we don't run plates and it comes back, no insurance.
Okay.
So it's usually, that's something added on to the first, what, the reason why you were stopped. It's not the reason why you were stopped.
Okay, thanks.
Eric? So I'm looking at page four, hold on a second. Here, I'm looking at page four and trying to figure out, I think it's based on three years, twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen, and the total number of stops over those three years was something like eighteen thousand, if I add up all of those.
It's a little bit higher than that because I excluded American Indian and unknown races, but generally, yeah. It's from twenty twelve to twenty sixteen, so it's about five years.
About five years?
Yeah.
Okay, so that means that there are, on average, something like three and a half thousand stops a year.
Generally.
And I look nationwide, roughly sixty percent of the population of the United States drives, so I'll assume, if I assume that's the same for Urbana, that's about twenty-four thousand drivers. So what that means is on the, the average person gets stopped once every six years. Does that sound, have I, have I doing the, the arithmetic correctly?
Well, the problem with that is only half the drivers that we stop live in Urbana. So it's, the, the driving population is different from the resident population.
Sure. Sure, but, but the Urbana residents probably get stopped elsewhere, too.
Right.
So it's, so I'm going to guess that it roughly, roughly averages out. So if we have a discrepancy of, let's say, one point five, that would be the difference maybe between being stopped every five years or being stopped every eight years, is, is what we're talking about in terms of the, the load of being stopped on the average driver.
Yes.
Okay.
So I just want to ask a question that's probably more directly to the police department that really cuts to the quick of the whole thing for me. How is the population that is the highest number of people stopped less than everybody else?
How is, so you're talking about the Caucasian population, why are they stopped?
Absolutely.
Well, that's, that's something we'll have to look at the numbers and decide. I mean, there's a lot of variables in that, whether it's where the, where, where the police are at, why we're in a certain area, what's going on in that area, why, I mean, there's a lot of variables in that, and without, this is, I'll let Melissa answer this more, but this is one of the main reasons we went with an analyst, tried to figure these things out, make sure we can justify what we're doing and why we're doing, and try to get a, and in the end, come up with a plan and a solution that's, that works for everybody.
And so I did, I do want to note that we're not stopping more African American drivers than Caucasian drivers in sheer numbers. So we stopped almost eleven thousand Caucasian drivers in the five-year period that we're looking at, and we stopped fifty-five hundred African Americans. So what we're, what we're looking at with the disparity ratio is what we expect based on the driving population. So we are stopping more Caucasian drivers, but we're stopping less than we would expect based on their driving population.
Yeah, and my question is why? Are they better drivers than everybody else?
So, do you mind if I chime in a little bit?
No, I really want the police department to answer that question.
All right, I'll let, I'll let her.
Well, that, that's more a responsibility for me, so I, I, I don't know if I can give you an answer tonight. I mean, the, the reason, I think the mapping program that Melissa has requested, that the request for proposal is out now and in the near future, we will be able to better analyze that. Why have we had a hundred and five shooting events in our community in the last year with all of the victims being African American except for one? I don't have an answer for that tonight. I can tell you that we-
That wasn't my question for you, though.
I understand. Your question to me was why are more African Americans proportionally stopped, and I don't have an answer for that tonight. That's the purpose for the study, that's the purpose for Alex working with the Human Relations Commission and the I dot traffic study and with us, to try to better dissect that. Simple things like checking a box, one of the questions that was asked a number of times in the past was pretextual stops, and we need to do a better job collecting that data so we can present those answers to you in the future. So at this point, it's not fair to ask these guys what the answer is because that's a responsibility of mine, is the police chief, and I don't have the answer for you. I'll try to get you the answer in time, and we'll be able to try to work together to try to get those answers, but we've got to collect the data first.
So, we are looking, I, I know that you're trying to do a lot of training, right? And I know that some of the implicit bias and all that type of stuff is a part of the training, right? And when we look at the ten to twelve years of this information being shared, stories being shared and data, especially from African American drivers and perspective, it took a lot to get us to this particular space. And I'm just wondering, at what point, if at any point, does the Urbana Police Department say, we, we do have this concern or this implicit bias that results in us stopping people of color more than we stop Caucasian drivers? Is that something that you are actually looking at?
I shared with Eric Jacobson the amount of training that the Urbana Police Department has provided annually to each officer for the last seven years, and every, the, the state of Illinois has presented man, unfunded mandates, as I heard earlier tonight, about additional training, that is a requirement of each police officer. And the answer is absolutely yes. We are continually striving to do a better job recognizing why there are a number of issues in the community that we're trying to address. And implicit bias is one of the many issues that we're continually studying and we're continually trying to educate our officers with. And along with the data, hopefully, we're going to move in the direction of figuring out why. Again, I don't have the answer for the number of shootings in the community, but we want to try to figure out- for the number of shootings in the community, but we want to try to figure out why.
So, again, we keep coming back to shootings, I don't know how we keep coming back to shootings, we're talking about-
Well, because I think there's a correlation between some of the traffic stops and the number of times that the police are in a particular neighborhood, as Mr. Jacobson mentioned earlier. However, I don't have that data yet, because we don't have the program that's able for us to analyze that. So once we get it, I'll be able to present a more informed response by saying, here's the data that says why we were in that neighborhood, and why those traffic stops took place.
So my, my question is pretty specific as to, does the Urbana Police Department, and you as the chief?
Right.
Do you accept the notion or the premise that there is implicit bias that contributes to the disparity of African-American?
Aaron, I don't have, I don't have an, an opinion on that at this point, because I don't have the data to support it. Is there implicit bias with everybody? Absolutely, there is. No question about it. And, and that's why we continue to train our officers, and that we, that's why we continue to strive to improve the police department's professionalism by way of providing training in all facets, including implicit bias.
Eric?
So I, I would just say, I appreciated, you know, being able to see those materials, and although I'm not a professional in that area, they, they look really quite, quite good to me, and I understand they can't be, like, put on the web, because they're copyrighted, they have to be used in, in the training or educational context. But, you know, with that restriction, I guess I would encourage you to share those as widely as, as possible, because I, I, I think that is a meaningful response that you have made on, on this issue, and, and, and it should be, you know, it should be appreciated.
Thanks.
Mike? Yes, sir, Alex?
Just wanted to make sure I got my two cents, and the presentation's not quite over. Just wanted to mention that I am very excited about the leadership that the city of Urbana has demonstrated on this issue, and I completely agree that Aaron has a concern in not only Councilman Adams, but many people in the community. And the leadership that I wanted to laud is, we are engaging in frequent conversations now between the police department and the HRO office. We are now meeting, we've been meeting almost twice a week, we're going to start meeting on a regularly scheduled basis monthly. We haven't communicated very much today, but we're going to be returning to the production of an annual report that will give the council and the community a much more comprehensive picture of the operations of the police department. In one of our meetings, in about 15 minutes, we fleshed out the, the table of contents of what that report would look like. We've already begun to have some wonderful conversations around metrics, indicators, and dashboards for the police department. We're at the cutting edge, the city of Urbana is at the cutting edge of responsible, legitimate, intelligence-led policing. And the, the IDOT data was one step on that journey. The task force that you empaneled was another big step on that journey. The excellent work done by Paul Testa, the statistician, was another huge leap forward, and now having Melissa here, we are really moving. And we're looking forward to the reporting that we're going to be able to bring to you. I did also want to mention that we are going to be coming to you every month, you've asked for that, and this is your December update. We're going to be coming back to you in January and giving you an update. We're going to come back in February, giving you an update. And in addition to that, I also wanted to mention that this new checkbox, the police department was enthusiastic, this is the right thing to do, let's collect that data point, let's look at how it compares to the rest of the data, and come back and see where we're at. So I'm really excited about all of that. Is there implicit bias in the police department? Yes. Does it contribute to policing? Of course. Here and every other part of, of the United States. The same thing in the court system, the same thing in the hospitals, it's everywhere. And one of the things we're doing is to look at, how does it impact our, our, our law enforcement? How can we manage it? There are some pieces of it that as, as our law enforcement officers are exercising their duties, they're, they're participating in tons of other disparities that are leading to that interaction that they're having. And so we're eventually going to be trying to tease out some of that impact. But I, I do want to communicate to you, I'm a critic of having good metrics and inquiry. We have a wonderful analyst that is, has great integrity, we're looking at the data, we are a transparent city. I'm really excited of where we're going, and I'm really excited to see where we're going to be this time next year. And I think it's going to be a, a really significant place. And that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to tell you, that we've been making quite a bit of progress.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Could you tell us when you expect to get the mapping program?
Tentatively, we, we hope to start implementing in February.
Okay.
So there'll be an installation process, and then some training that'll be involved in that, so hopefully, first quarter of next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So moving on, agenda item number eight is staff reports. You have any staff reports? All right. Okay, so the next agenda item is resolution number 201612070R, resolution reaffirming Urbana as a sanctuary city. Mayor pressing.
I did create a shorter version of that, just because I wanted people to be able to get the ideas pretty quickly without having to wade through a lot of words. So I'll pass out the shorter version. It was based on the one that was mailed out. I did email you this one, I think I made one change on it, and that's the fourth whereas down, I said requiring fair and equal protection of the law for individuals. That was a slight change in the previous language, but basically, this is just to set the policy of the city, that we are reaffirming what we have been doing, and that, you know, we're in a different situation now, different federal government coming in, and also asking to stand with the mayors and councils from other communities with our immigrant residents, and defend the policies that welcome and protect immigrants. So I have no problem with adding the two items that Francis Boyle suggested, but I just didn't want to leave out the fact that Urbana already has been doing these things for quite a long time. So rather than spelling out in detail what the human rights ordinance is, for example, in the third whereas, we just say that we, we adopted it in 1975, and it prohibits unlawful discrimination throughout the city, and then it cites the resolution that required fair and equal protection of the law for individuals.
Charlie?
Well, personally, I prefer the longer resolution, because it's a reminder of all the things there, and if you could blend the two, so that you could refer back to our, our previous support as a sanctuary city, that would, that would, I would welcome that, but I think it's important also to indicate, you know, we're, this is a new generation, essentially, it's, it's been a long time, you know, it's a long time since 1986, and I wasn't even on the council back then. I didn't come onto the council until 89, so, and there was a big gap in between there, too, folks. So, you know, I, I, I like the wording of the longer version of the resolution, and I, but I do agree that we should include the two provisions of Professor Boyle.
Eric and Dennis?
I also was not on the council in 1986, however, I was involved with a community group that was providing direct assistance to refugees of the sort that were mentioned in that resolution. But I do think that that resolution, I think it, you know, I'm really happy that this community still, I believe, a majority of people in this community, or consensus of this community, still believes in the spirit of that resolution. However, I think the specifics of that resolution are no longer relevant. It was a different time, it was really a different point in our history. Having said that, I actually was moved to go back and reexamine the text of what is perhaps the most important resolution in human history, which was the Declaration of Independence. And because this was a resolution declaring an intent to commit civil disobedience on a massive scale. This was a declaration of intent, of, of, of an intention that all of the laws by which the signatories had been bound, all of the British law as it governed the colonies, they intended to disregard it and, and establish something completely different. And they went on to say, they weren't perfect, they said, "A decent concern for the opinions of mankind," and of course, we now know they should have said humanity, but they were all sexist. And nobody's perfect, even us, even us, we are not perfect, I'm sure. But, but one of the things, but then they explained why they were doing what they were doing. And one of the things that we, who do, you know, support this, tend to sweep under the rug is the issue that Mr. Madigan raised. And the issue is that undocumented immigrants who are in the United States have committed a violation of immigration law. That's undeniable. And what, and, and so I would like to work into this something like the following. While recognizing the fact that undocumented immigrants who are in the United States have committed a violation of immigration law, we judge the human, moral, and practical negative costs and actual evils of deportation or other major sanctions against undocumented residents of our community and country to far outweigh the legal circumstances of their arrival and continued residence. And, and just for a little context on that, the police authorities, prosecutors and so forth, do not pursue all violations of the law with equal intensity. The violations of the law that are pursued with the highest degree of concern and intensity are violent crimes, murder, rape, or frauds that leave people destitute, and other, other, and other violations are less seriously pursued. That's a judgment call. Not all violations of law are equal. And what I would assert, and I think this is implicit in everybody who supports this, is that the evils and human cost of rigorous enforcement of immigration laws against people, undocumented immigrants in this country, that those far outweigh the fact that they arrived in violation of those laws. So I'd like to recognize that explicitly, I'd like to face that directly. And, you know, I think that not everybody will agree with our conclusion, but at least we will have stated very honestly why we are taking the position that we are taking.
Dennis?
Hey, that's, I think, well said and thoughtful. I just wanted to comment on the resolution proposed by the mayor, which I thought was, you know, well worded also. One of the, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth whereas, in that resolution refers to the election of Donald Trump as the 45th President of the United States. And I feel that our principles go beyond the, whatever elected official may or may not hold an office at every, at whatever level. So I would prefer that we make no reference to this specific instance in the history of America where the threat has recently arisen again, and make a stand on the larger principles that we stand for. And so my preference would be to reiterate that our stand is against any threat which erodes the city's well-established human rights principles. And the clause might be reduced to something which I've written up. Whereas the Urbana City Council and Mayor oppose any plan that threats to strip federal funding from any cities who have adopted policies that protect undocumented immigrants and other non-citizen residents from deportation. It carries the major concern of the, the paragraph without trying to tie it to one specific moment in time.
Bill?
I have a couple of concerns. One is, I know during the Immigration Forum public meeting at the Champaign Public Library about two weeks ago, which I think 200-plus, 250 people attended, several speakers talked about their preference for using welcoming city or immigrant, immigrant-friendly community rather than sanctuary city. The impression I got was that some of them felt that sanctuary city implied a level of protection that we can't really offer, and that sanctuary also implies enclosure, and we don't want to feel like we're enclosing people. So I think the language of sanctuary city should be up for discussion, and if anybody that was at the forum wanted to comment on that, I think that would be appropriate. The other thing, I think, for most of the, most of the audience really focuses on the human rights and the way the immigration policy is enforced, and I like that. I don't know if we want to weigh into immigration policy, it's really complicated, and I'm sure that most of us wish that it could be more accommodating, but I think it's good to really focus on the rights of the people that are here, documented and undocumented, and, and how they're treated, whether they're treated equally, whether they receive the due process, whether they're discriminated against because of their religion, things like that. And I think, for the most part, these address that. I, I do wish that we could include a little bit more of a reasoning in the wheres, maybe that emphasizes why it is, why it should be a concern of all local communities, and that is from the perspective of a public safety issue. And I think you talked about that earlier, as far as we, we want immigrants to be able to feel comfortable calling the police and knowing that the police will respond and address what they called for, and not some other issue that they may, you know, delve into because they're, they're asked to by the federal government to, to enforce certain laws, immigration laws. So I think if we could work that into there, that it's, it really is a public safety issue, we, we don't want people to be afraid to call the police. And we want, yeah, that's, that's the main thing. I did want to mention, I think it's appropriate, we're discussing it right now. Two days ago, I think on the 10th, was Human Rights Day, the United Nations initiated in 1948. And three days from now would be the 225th anniversary of the ratification of the Bill of Rights. It was Bill of Rights Day on Thursday. So it would have been nice to have a mayoral proclamation, actually, but maybe Immigrants Rights Day or something, but I think that it's kind of, just kind of odd that we're discussing it that time, I guess. It's also real important because of, from the public's safety perspective, especially because there are more than 10,000 international students here in Champaign-Urbana from, at the U of I, and I'm sure hundreds of those are Muslims. So all these people are at risk of being identified or potentially asked to prove their citizenship and treated differently because, because they're immigrants, because they're, they're, yeah, just because they're immigrants. And also, I think, according to census population, one out of, nearly one out of five Urbana residents was born abroad, so I thought that was kind of interesting. So I guess going forward, I don't know what our plans are, I think we need to kind of meld, meld some things, additional things into this. So I don't know if we'll be able to actually forward anything to council next week, or if we might, might want to hold it till January. I am kind of curious about, I know there have been discussions at the Immigration Forum about immigrant-friendly communities, and more broadly, what other things that we can do to help immigrants find resources to obtain the documentation they need. I know during that forum at the public library, people brought up things like, you know, minors especially needing rides to Chicago to talk to- especially needing rides to Chicago to talk to attorneys, which if they don't have that, they have to pay massive amounts of money for people to, to take them there. And even just access to attorneys, someone from the Immigration Project, the Illinois Immigration Project, has, I think, three attorneys to handle how many thousands of cases in Illinois. But I, one of the things she said that I just wanted to repeat because it stuck out in my mind was she said, she really enjoyed the easy cases where people found out they were already citizens, they were already legal residents. So a lot of people that need the documentation, just need the documentation. They don't need to go any farther than that. And a lot of the other people, it's a long process, it's a complicated process. And I think we should also look into how, how we could facilitate that as a city.
Okay, so I'm going to recognize the mayor, and then I did fail to recognize two citizens who wanted to speak on this issue, so the mayor, and then we'll go to those.
I, I do think that we need to just sort of get together and resolve some of the language, see where we should place things, because I don't think we're ready to vote on it today if we don't have everything all spelled out. So in answer to what Bill was just saying, the last part, which says, "Now therefore be it resolved," that says the City of Urbana commits to working with community advocates, policy experts, and legal advocates to defend the human rights of immigrants. The Urbana Police Department will continue to respond to requests from immigrant communities to defend them against all crimes, including hate crimes, to assist people with limited language proficiency, and to connect immigrants with information about legal services. And the City of Urbana will reject any effort to create religious litmus tests or a registry of individuals based on religion or ethnicity. And I think that one of the things that we learned at the forum at the Champaign Library was that the school districts are prohibited by law from keeping records on the immigration status of, of the students. So that was a refreshing thing to find out.
Okay, so, public input on this issue, the first slip I have is from Giovanni Vega, wishing to address at this time in support.
Hello. I'm here again. Thank you for letting me speak. I had prepared something to say, but a lot of you have already kind of taken those words out of my mouth, and I appreciate that, that's a, that's a wonderful thing. I did want to say that in the last week or so, since we last spoke, I have seen some pretty troubling comments in response to this whole sanctuary status. And even though, you know, it's, it's normal to expect some, some pushback from members of the community who don't agree, some of the things that I saw were pretty troubling. And so I think it's important to remember that it is precisely because of that, of that increasing xenophobic and hateful rhetoric that we have seen, especially since the election of, I won't say the name, that we're here. And it's, that's the reason why this council has decided to revisit its longstanding commitment to human and civil rights. So I thank you for that. I also wanted to make a mention earlier that there was some discussion about whether the term illegal was the correct term to use. And that term is discouraged because it is dehumanizing, and it is offensive. And this is not a function of political correctness. It is, it is merely out of respect for the humanity of the undocumented population. They are, after all, human beings, and acts can be illegal, that's true, but people, human beings, cannot be illegal. So I think we should keep that in mind when we move forward in the debate. And then also, something that I usually bring up is that legality, it's not always equal to justice or morality. And history has shown us that, so let's keep that in mind. But I thank you all for your efforts, and like I said, you all said pretty much all I had to say, so, thank you.
Bill would like to ask you a question?
Giovanni, could you comment on how people feel about sanctuary versus immigrant-friendly?
Oh, yeah, and I actually read a, I think it was an article in the New York City about Alderwoman Marlin, who said that that was kind of a, an iffy term to use, because it's kind of polemic. Personally, I don't have a problem with using welcoming city instead. I mean, it's all semantics. Sanctuary does, I think, imply some, certain things that, like you said, you may not be able to provide. I think welcoming city or immigrant-friendly city does the job just as well. That's my personal opinion. I would invite someone else from the public to also add to that. Yes?
So I'd just say, I'm old enough that I have gone through several cycles of bending my mind around terms with which to refer to disadvantaged or oppressed people. Because what happens is you have a term that's perfectly respectful, perfectly polite, and then people who disagree start using that as an epithet. So now you've got to change the term.
The hijack it, yes.
So it's something else, it's something else, it's something else. So I'm fine if sanctuary is being used as an epithet, then we could go to welcoming city. A couple of years from now, that'll be used as an epithet, we'll be looking for something else, but I, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it should be controversial, but I also don't want that to stop us from moving forward. So if welcoming city is something that more people are willing to get behind, then so be it.
Mayor?
I did notice that the topic is usually referred to as sanctuary city, and I think we have defined what it means, but I think welcoming is a more bland word.
True.
So I would, maybe we could say sanctuary slash welcoming, but I would hate to lose the word sanctuary, and there were people at the Champaign Library that said that as well.
I mean, I personally prefer sanctuary, but like, I repeat again, I don't want that to stop us from moving forward with this, so.
Okay. I don't think it would, but we could use both.
Yeah, that would be, I think, a good compromise.
Okay.
There you go.
Well, I do, I, thank you. I do prefer welcoming, and one of the many reasons is that we also have a campaign called Your Welcome, which is part of our Champaign County Economic Development Strategy. And it's on a water tower, actually, in West Champaign that you can see from the interstate. So I think saying that we are a welcoming committee and having a full-blown marketing campaign based on Your Welcome is a nice integrated approach to, to welcoming people to our community and emphasizing that. And sometimes bland is better than not, when it means the same thing.
There's also the, is it immigrant-friendly that I heard being said?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that we could also use.
Yes.
That captures the, it captures the immigrant component of it that welcoming kind of leaves out, so I do agree with that.
That would be fine, too.
Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out that there were a couple of things in here that I don't know which resolution we're working with.
Well, hang on a second. So are, do you have, do you have a question of our?
No, no, no.
Okay, well, I have, I have one more community input, and then you're next up.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Okay.
So Karen Arum in support.
Yes, I was going to say that I've lived in 12.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. I've lived in, I've lived in 12 different cities throughout my life, eight of those are here in the U.S. And when I found myself back in the Midwest, I was like, oh, my goodness. But one of the things I was most proud of, not only the high caliber of people here, but also the fact that this is a sanctuary city. And I have to tell you, I really liked the word sanctuary because I was doing Google searches on it. And I kept coming up with welcoming city, and I kept thinking, oh, that's PR. That's PR for their website, dissing it, and then going around again and finally finding that they, that's what was meant by it. So I want to stick with sanctuary city, if possible, if that's not offensive to anyone. I also want to point out that people who complain about the federal government, that we're doing something illegal against the federal government, we should comply with laws. I'd like to point out, our federal government does not comply with our laws. That is why we are a sanctuary city to begin with. Anyone who was involved, that's what I also, I'm very proud of, is that it's a sanctuary city because political activists against war were the ones that took up this cause. And we have to look at what our government is doing now. The AUMF that was acquired back in, right after 9/11, has been expanded to include, we've got Iraq, we've got the devastation of Afghanistan, we've got Libya, we've got Syria. We have so many immigrants, all right, they're refugees now, but flooding Europe while we take a mere 10,000, okay, of which we are responsible. And there, and there's no getting around that fact. So to me, any suggestion that we should be sending back people because they're undocumented, and keep in mind, a lot of the undocumented may be economic. Well, what do you think happens when you bomb a nation, when you create refugees? Not only do you kill their families off, you destroy their communities, you leave them without any opportunities to survive, they end up in refugee camps, sometimes for years. If you've ever seen a refugee camp, believe me, it's not a place you want to be before they actually get sometimes to a second or a third place. So I'm proud, I've told this to many people, it's known around the world now that Urbana is a sanctuary city. And I said that we're working on revising it, and I'm hoping to be able to report to others around the world that we've, we've improved it, we've given it more strength as an ordinance. So thank you. I thank all of you.
Okay, thank you. Aaron?
So most of my comment was directed to the mayor. I think we're going to work it out as far as the resolution. And as long as sanctuary city is not offensive, and not just to, I mean, to all, we have to consider that there are several different populations who are coming here, the Congolese community, Muslim community from different countries, as well as, as folks from, from Spanish-speaking places. And now welcoming sounds fun to me because I think it makes white people feel welcome too, because they're immigrants, too.
Eric?
So I have actually a procedural question, which is how we're going to work out the wording. Now, a natural way to do that would be to circulate emails with successive edits, but I'm looking at Mr. Simon because I think he's going to tell us that violates the Open Meetings Act.
You don't need him to tell you, it is.
So, or, or Mr. Madigan, so, so, so my question is, is there a way that we can efficiently converge on wording? So for example, could we notice, you know, give notice of, and actually have a meeting that we might have in the conference room upstairs, we'll all sit around with our laptops, and it will be during a noticed meeting, so, and anybody can come who wants to look over our shoulders, but we'll run versions around. Would that comply?
Absolutely. As long as you publish notice of the meeting and the agenda, and you provide for public input, it's called a special meeting. And you can have a special meeting for a single purpose, we do it all the time here.
Diane?
I would suggest an alternative approach, just send suggest, everyone's publicly voiced suggestions here. I would say send suggestions to the mayor and let her incorporate it into those, the basic structure that we received before, and then that can be circulated as a draft for consideration for our next meeting, and we might even be able to pass it by next week, rather than another special meeting.
Yeah, we, we could do it that way, or we could have a, a meeting that we set up and notice, but if everybody has specific language already that they want to propose, we could just put it all in there, and then you could look at it item by item. Okay, I got Dennis's.
Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Charlie?
Actually, no, actually, so if, if we want to take this up next week, if you think it can be done, then we need to put it on the agenda. So I will move to put this on, on the council agenda next week with no recommendation pending edits.
Second.
It's been moved by Charlie, seconded by Aaron. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Agenda item number 10, ordinance number 2016-12-113, ordinance approving a power purchase agreement without renewable energy credits with WCP Solar Services LLC. I'm sure we're going to be taking this in conjunction with number 11.
Correct.
Yep, all right.
So, good evening, it's getting late, so I'll try and be brief. What I have in your packet are two distinct ordinances that match two distinct power purchase agreements. These power purchase agreements for a solar array are the exact same dollars and cents that we looked at last week. The only thing we have this week that we didn't have last week is we have an installer signature on both of the power purchase agreements. So both of those proposals are confirmed as still viable and on offer from, from the, from the installer. I did get a couple of questions in the last week, and so I just want to very briefly clarify a couple of numbers, if, if it'll open up on the computer here.
Bill Gates is the richest man in the world, by the way.
Perhaps I'll direct, just direct you to the location on your memo, where it says, here we go, where these, where these cost summaries say total costs, that is not the installation cost, we're not paying the installation cost, that's the total aggregate cost to, in terms of the per kilowatt hour fees that we would pay over 25 years, that's not an annual cost, that's the, that's the total cost over 25 years. I also, it occurred to me today that I never presented, although it's implied, I never presented a do-nothing scenario, and so I have that on the screen as well. So do, do nothing means we continue to buy electricity through an alternative, alternative retail electric supplier. And so you can see what that cost would be for this facility over 25 years. Then you see option one, where the city could enter into a power purchase agreement for a solar array, the total cost for electricity with that option, the net present value savings over 25 years. And then that would include the keeping renewable energy credits, which would have us creating demand for renewable energy and have us be able to claim that renewable energy. Then option two, again, you see the total cost, the actual payments we would make for electricity over the course of 25 years, and then the, the savings as well. In option two, we would be selling or supplying renewable energy credits and the renewable energy attributes they represent, and we wouldn't be making a renewable energy claim on our greenhouse gas inventory. With that, I'll take any questions, and also, staff is looking for council's recommendation as to which option to pursue.
Mayor, and then Dennis?
Well, the, we had discussion about what's beneficial for the taxpayers, but the difference between 4,000 and 21,000 over 25 years is about $680 a year. And so I think it's worth it to get the recs and have it be reducing our, you know, what we're saying our goal is.
Dennis?
Yeah, I had a pretty, pretty interesting conversation last evening with a group of neighbors about this topic, which, it kind of surprised me, the interest that they placed in the topic and how long we talked about it. And I saw the group change their feelings a little bit. At first, there was discussion about, you know, saving the taxpayers money, all right. But then, when we consider that by retaining the recs and actually making the statement that we have reduced our carbon footprint use, and that it aligns with the city's goals, and that without making these efforts, we don't encourage other sections of the community to also make these decisions. And so perhaps more from what I would call a Republic of Urbana moral position. My neighbors decided that they were willing to lose a few bucks over a long My neighbors decided that they were willing to lose a few bucks over a long period of time to support the retention of the recs now. And I didn't talk to them about it, but it occurs to me that, that our, this agreement that we've already signed, I mean, we've already had the signatory supplier, you know, be willing to go in either direction, in, was it, in five years, you know, we can come back to this decision and reconsider it before we make, you know, the commitment that we're just not going to maintain the recs, but we're going to like sell them off and, you know, make a buck. So, so we decided, a small group of us decided that, okay, you know, we're willing to go in for the commitment and to make a stand for this, just like we would make a stand, some people want to make a stand at the pipeline, or other people want to make a stand for immigration. Well, we are willing to make a stand for sustainability, knowing that we can, a future council can make its other decision at, because it's basically a safety valve. And one of the other points that came up from our discussion was that, why not invest in solar at, at say, the recycling center where there is acres and acres of open land, which is unclouded by trees, and make a, build the solar farm of Urbana at that site, rather than try to stick it on the roof where you already had HVAC units, you've got maintenance problems, you got, you know, painting and other things. But establish an Urbana solar collection farm and expand it as we can afford it, but make this the initial investment. And that's, so I'm going to support maintaining the recs at this time.
Bill.
Okay, I'll take the opposite position. I was, when we, when we made the municipal electric aggregation deal where we actually purchased the recs for the city to offset a lot, to basically say we were using green energy, I was opposed to that, and so if you're opposed to buying them, you should be in favor of selling them, so I am in favor of selling these recs. I think the argument is that the total cost of 29,000, even though this is a small project, you could imagine a larger project like Dennis was talking about, where the savings would be hundreds of thousands instead of just 20,000, just 20,000 over 25 years. But that's a compelling argument to install more solar. So if your goal is to install solar, and you can save almost half, well, really, half the cost of your energy by installing solar, but only if you sell the recs, that's still a good argument for installing solar. Our goal is to replace carbon with solar, so that's a positive. And I think it's actually a better argument than being able to say that we're using green energy, because we retain the recs and we're only saving $4,000, assuming the cost of energy would be what's been predicted. If the cost of energy actually isn't that high, then we won't save that much. So there are some assumptions. So I would go with the higher savings to encourage more solar panel development.
Eric.
So, there's a wonderful line from Eugene O'Neill's Long Day's Journey Into Night, where this character who sits all the time drinking says, "I am cursed with the ability to see all sides to every question." And I think that I have been persuaded to go with option one, and I have a question, you know, in the spirit of this really high morality, environmental morality, is there a market where you can buy recs for Christmas gifts?
Absolutely.
Is there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, give us a pointer to that.
Say again?
Point us with a URL to that.
Oh, okay, I'll send you an email. There's a lot of them.
Interesting idea. Okay, so I passed around a little graph. I've disagreed with Bill publicly on recs and their usefulness in the past. I shared with you an email from constituent of Diane Marlins, a pair of constituents of Diane Marlins, that talks about basically keeping the recs because they support, support the acquisition of more and more renewable energy. And so when you think about, say we have 100 electrons that are needed by a community, 100, you know, units of electricity, however you want to think about it, they're electrons, and you have a power plant that does coal, a power plant that does wind, another power plant that's fusion, I was going to say fusion, that'd be a wish, and another one that's solar. And so I just did a little diagram, I've got two, three plants here, and 10 electrons are produced by the solar plant, 50 by another one and 40 by another one. They go out onto the grid, everything gets put onto the grid, okay? Electrons and electron after it's, after it's turned into energy. And then it gets used. And user one uses 55 electrons, user two uses 35 electrons, and user three uses 10 Who gets the credit for solar in this picture? It's the person who has the 10 recs, you know, and that's what this is all about. And if we want more solar out there, we need to be encouraging the production of more renewable energy to generate those recs. The whole point here is that if you divorce the production from the consumption here, yes, the building might be using the solar on the roof, but it's allowing somebody else, by selling the recs, you're allowing somebody else to greenwash their non-renewable energy source, and that to me is the problem. And if we're trying to encourage greenhouse reduction, we need to be keeping our recs and encouraging others to purchase recs.
Okay, Diane, then Aaron, then Bill.
Well, at this point, we've generated far more words than electrons will ever be produced by these solar panels. And I apologize for my part in this. I'm, I'm going to support the ordinance that keeps the recs. I heard from several constituents who, who value that. So we're paying basically $670 a year to be able to make this claim. I will say that my hope for the future is that if we're going to put up these sorts of arrays, that they be in a place where more people will see them, so they actually have a real educational value. Most people are never going to see these solar panels out there at the Landscape Recycling Center, and, and we can talk about them all we want, but, but if you can't point to them and say, you know, "Look, the city of Urbana is doing this here, right where it's publicly visible," you know, those words could be worth a lot more. So, yes, I'll vote for it, I don't think we, you know, it's time to stop talking about this and move on, but it's been a good discussion and I've learned a lot, and I'm, we get the paper that was spent to produce this, but it's been a good discussion.
Maybe if we have a two-for-one sale on pavers, we'll get more people out there to see the array, what do you think?
Could be.
All right, Aaron.
I move adoption of option one.
It's, it's been moved by Aaron, seconded by Eric, to, I'm sorry, by Charlie, to approve option one.
What's option one?
Option one, power purchase agreement with the city retaining a portion of the recs. I'm reading off the memo. So I guess I ought to read the ordinance. Which one, Scott?
I think it's the second one on your agenda.
Okay, so.
It does say with or without in the title of the resolution, to clarify.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to recommend agenda item number 11, ordinance number 2016-12-114, an ordinance approving a power purchase agreement with renewable energy credits with WCP Solar Services LLC. I think we ought to, should we take a roll call vote here? Okay. Bill?
I just have another comment, since Charlie raised the issue of greenwashing. If you believe that us selling this recs from this 20,000 kilowatt per hour solar installation is, allows someone else to greenwash their power, then you must believe that the recs we're buying for millions of megawatts of power that everyone is paying for on their electric bill through electric aggregation is also greenwashing.
I think Charlie wants to respond.
I thought my hand was up first.
Okay, Aaron.
Can we call a question, please?
Charlie.
I'll let it go. We could, we can argue it over a beer.
Thank you.
As long as I'm not listening.
Diane, can you take the chair? I don't want to beat this.
Yes, I will take the chair.
Just real quickly, I'm just going to say that, well, I agree with Bill, and I'm a bottom-line guy, and the bottom line is here, no matter how little it saves the city, it saves the city taxpayers, and I think we ought to accept option two. With that, I'll take the chair back. All those, all those in favor of agenda item number 11, as stated previously, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, nay. It appears the ayes slimly narrowly have it.
I've looked twice.
All right, so, it's 10:02, just pointing that out. Agenda item, not under my watch, agenda item number 12, ordinance number 2016-12-115, and ordinance approving right-of-way license agreement with MCDJ LLC, 208 West Greg Street. The Cliff Notes version, please.
I will do that for you. The Cliff Notes version is MCDJ owns a property at 208 North Greg Street. In kind of an unusual situation, the city right-of-way actually goes up to the face of the building. Mr. Tom Sheenan is here with me this evening. He is the owner of 25 O'Clock Brewery that will be opening at 208 West Greg Street, and they would like to create a patio entry space with a canopy over it in said right-of-way on the south side of the building. So per city policy, we have to bring a license agreement to city council to get approval, to allow them to construct said improvements in front of the building. There is no cost to the city, that's something that the property owner and business owner will pay, and the city will actually benefit in the term of $382.50 and an annual license fee for use of said right-of-way. So that's kind of the Cliff Notes version. Like I said, Tom is here to answer any questions about the business use of it that you might have.
Diane.
Looking forward to the opening of your establishment, I move approval of ordinance number 2016-12-115, and to send it to council with a motion for approval.
It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Charlie.
Quick question.
All right, Charlie.
This is in the, what is currently the driveway into the garage, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's like, we're not losing parking, it's just, yeah, okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it, thank you. Agenda item number 13, resolution number 2016-12-069R, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Urbana and the Urbana Park District for removal of sediment from Crystal Lake sediment basin.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to have this evening with me Caitlin and Tim from the Park District. They're going to give you a brief, short presentation to give you a little background on the project, and then I'll move very quickly through the intergovernmental agreement and the budget amendment ordinance.
Yes, hello. So we're here to talk tonight about the Crystal Lake sediment basin specifically, and we'd like to frame that in terms of how water is fed into the Crystal Lake system in the first place. So there are a number of stormwater inlets that come into the lake. The green ones there are based on parkland, the blue inlets, I think I might be missing one, sorry, the blue inlets come from City of Urbana storm sewers, storm sewer systems. We additionally have groundwater inlets and outlets to the saline, there are my other two blue dots at the bottom there, sorry. But a lot of people don't know that Crystal Lake is fed primarily by stormwater that's coming from a 160-acre watershed. The majority of that comes through a 54-inch City of Urbana stormwater pipe that goes to the northern end of the lake, at which we've installed, we installed in 1985, actually, about 30 years ago, a sediment trap basin, a weir wall behind which sediment is captured before it moves into the rest of the lake system. So there's that watershed, for example, and everything that's labeled number two, as well as some of the number one, goes through that sediment trap basin. That's, that's where that water comes out. So that goes all the way west to Goodwin at its farthest, and north along Lincoln Avenue for quite a ways. And in addition to that, we have a map of the stormwater, the pipe system, and all of the blue lines are city pipes that move into the Crystal Lake, into the sediment trap basin directly. Just one more showing what the other city inlets are, that there are several others on the southern end of the lake that do come in, though that's a much smaller watershed than on that northern end. Over 30 years of accumulation into the sediment trap basin, we've become aware of a number of concerns with what the quality of that, of that sediment actually is, what's contained within that sediment, and had tests done in the last two years, core samples that indicated that there's actually quite a lot of, basically, road grit asphalt that's washed into that system based on, on the watershed that it's coming from. And so you can see here a picture of what that core actually looks like, that it really does kind of just look like road that was pulled out. It was so tough, it actually broke the instrument that was used to do the core sampling, so, so that's how hard this was.
Can we use it to patch potholes?
We have had that conversation, unfortunately, probably not. And right now, you can, you can see in physical space just how much of that sediment basin is full, that when the water level is down, you can see that there's basically a big island. And in the background there, you can actually see, on the top left picture, you can see that 54-inch pipe and where it comes in. Within the testing that we had done, like I said, what it's showing is levels of contaminants for these, what's called PAHs, polyaromatic hydrocarbons, which are a volatile compound which are linked to medical issues that people might have, birth defects, things like that, if people are exposed to it. Of course, people probably aren't that exposed to it out of the sediment basin at this time, but it still is a health concern, given the number of people who are in the park, people who are eating dinner out of the park, people who are fishing out of this lake. And based on this level of contamination, we can't just go in, scoop it all out, and put it somewhere. This level of contamination indicates by I E P A standards that it should go to a certified landfill as a result. It is also having impact on the rest of the health of the lake system and the park in general, that these, not only are there these contaminants, but there are high levels of nitrogen and phosphorus that are present due to the sediment accumulation that's in the lake, that are feeding things like our noxious weeds, our watermeal and duckweed that make the lake, basically, it makes it look terrible, that nobody wants to use the lake when it looks like this. And like I said, so we've got the nutrient load, we've got the sedimentation with the sediment basin. We also have tested high impaired in largemouth bass for mercury, and we did just complete, we don't have the final report yet, but we did just complete additional independent testing of five species of fish and the sediment for mercury contamination. And like I said, we're still working through those results, but certainly the impairment on the largemouth bass is of great concern, given the amount of fishing that takes place in that lake. And we are working towards solutions, we are putting together a comprehensive plan that's going to address water quality in the lake, and so that includes, the sediment basin dredging is a major component in that, as we think that a lot of the nutrients are stored in that, as well as other controls like wetland creation and aeration that might move into the lake. That's one potential for, for water treatment that we're looking at, that we think would be very aesthetically pleasing in space, and shoreline stabilization to reduce erosion and reduce more sediment moving into the lake system, which would be primarily accomplished through like a native plant buffer along the edge of the lake. And last, just a look at the comprehensive plan that we have for this, that water quality would be addressed throughout the, the rest of the lake system and tie into an overall park improvement, and hopefully, things like connections to downtown Urbana and the neighborhoods and the housing developments that are taking place in that area, all of which would benefit from these improvements. So happy people in the lake. So that is my very brief introduction to kind of what we're talking about tonight.
Okay, first, I have to mention here that I had a slip out of order, and I apologize Okay, first, I have to mention here that I had a slip out of order, and I apologize to Bill Rose, who wanted to speak on the solar power purchase recs. So, my bad. And it was supposed to be at the time of the agenda item, so I apologize for that. Okay, questions on this subject?
I was just wondering to what degree or... The filtering system, I saw he had caught all the, Daryl had his hand, is, Daryl, are we missing something? Were you on the list?
I do have a slip on this, do you want me to have him?
Oh, no, I just saw him waving, waving his hand.
Yeah, I do have a slip.
So you're, the filtration process, or what's being used, just, when I think about people washing their cars or doing all kinds of different things, all of that water gets into Crystal Lake. So to, how high-tech is the filtration system? Exactly what does it filter out? Everything, or, I mean, just, if you could just expound on that briefly?
Go ahead, Brad.
Okay, I'd be glad to take that. That's a very good question, Erin. Actually, it's a very simple system. Basically, it's just a big hole in the ground. The water comes into it, because it's such a wide hole, the water slows down and the sediment settles out. So one of the things a lot of people don't realize is, anything that goes down the storm sewer really isn't treated. It actually all ends up, it's not like the sanitary sewer system, it goes to a treatment plant and it's screened, and there's sedimentation basins and biological treatment and chlorination. You know, the stormwater just basically goes right in. But this particular one, they're just using kind of a wide part of the lake to drop the sediment out.
Bill, then, Dennis.
Yeah, I know, probably every few years, there's a pretty massive flood usually, from the saline, not from the stormwater, from the city stormwater, that overflows the banks and creates some buildup along the river, like especially in the north parking lot there, you can tell where it's, where the sediment has dropped there. When you took these sediment cores, were they taken in a way that where you could actually see the horizons and be able to tell if there was sediment coming from those flood events, and if so, how much?
When we took these cores, we actually, we turned them into a composite sample, so there was no history that we could tell from the cores themselves, that would take a much more complicated and in-depth sampling process and testing process. That was not done at this time.
Dennis.
So I know the Park District has solicited public input for an overview of the redevelopment of the park as a whole. And I guess I'm not, I guess maybe you'd like to, I would like to get information from you as to how far along public input has been sifted and has become perhaps part of the goals or the long-term planning for the park. And if we're looking at some of these slides that show eventually modification of the bank, you know, wildlife planting and other kinds of ways of handling the water use in the lake itself, where does the dredging come in? And is it going to be happening no matter what is decided as far as the plan for the use of Crystal Lake Park?
So we've continued to receive public input on this process for the last two years or so, and even before that. So far, what we've received has been very positive, especially with the shoreline modifications and planting of native plants and pollinator habitat. The water quality has always been an important component of that. Right now, our main focus is removing the sediment out of the sediment basin only, and we're still evaluating what's going to happen with the rest of the sediment in the remaining lake system. We know that there are still nutrient challenges, but there's, our testing so far has indicated that there's about one foot average of sediment through the rest of the lake. And in some places, that's five feet deep, and in some places, that's not even an inch. It just depends on where you are and how the water is flowing. The sediment basin, though, like I said, is that focus because it has 30 years of accumulated sediment in it right now, that we know is contaminated and that we know is high in nutrients.
Just because you mentioned it, do you think that you're going to have to be dredging the entire lake eventually? And how many more years?
We don't rule that out. We are definitely still considering that. Part of that is going to be based on the mercury results that we're still working through, as well as we're evaluating a few techniques, things like alum dosing, where you put aluminum sulfate into the lake, which binds the phosphorus into an unusable state. But there's some concerns, it's still in the system then, it's still down there, the sediment is still accumulating, and so you're not really addressing the root of the problem when you use a technique like that. So water quality, water quality actually, I think, I would say is the trickiest issue that we're dealing with on the lake. It's the most complicated, and there is no silver bullet, there is no single answer to the issues that we're facing. It's got to be a comprehensive approach.
And is the lake draining too slowly? If it was more flowing, would there be less problem for you? And where does the lake drain out on the map? Right across the Broadway and toward the saline?
The lake has two outlets. One is an emergency overflow that's actually in the sediment basin itself, and one is at the southeast corner that drains to the saline. Right now, that is a passive drain, where when the lake level is high enough, it's just overflowing out into this drain. And actually, Brad is helping us, that we're looking at altering that to take water from the bottom of the lake, which I think will help with flow, will also help remove deoxygenated and anoxic water from the lake, helping those conditions. And we're going to install a stop-log structure that's going to allow us to control the level of the lake and lower it in cases like when we need to clean out the sediment basin, so that it's dewatered before we're removing that sediment.
So it sounds like you're doing an artificial kind of approach of how to keep the flow going. It's almost like a heart patient who's got a stent?
A little bit, yes.
Okay.
Eric?
So this is a small point, but duckweed is good stuff. I mean, it helps to soak up the nutrient from eutrophied water, and you can skim it off and distribute it to people to use as fertilizer in their compost piles. So don't try to kill it. Try to, you know, skim it and recycle it.
And duckweed is actually native to Illinois. I'm out on the lake every two weeks in a boat, and our problem is water meal. There is duckweed, but that green sheen that you see on it is 99% water meal, which is invasive and a much more difficult plant to deal with, unfortunately.
Okay, we have one minute left for every agenda item we have left, so one more question.
Now that the Park District, this lake is in the TIF district, is there any kind of expectation for funding that will help offset some of the costs? Because I imagine dredging is expensive.
We certainly hope so in the future, as we understand it, and working with community development, the TIF hasn't been around long enough to generate, you know, a revenue source. So perhaps future phases or something down the road. We really do appreciate working with community development to get part of Crystal Lake in that TIF zone, but as we understand it, wouldn't really help in the early years.
Any further questions or comments?
I guess I make a motion.
Yeah, I have one public input card from Daryl Cruz.
Thank you very much.
After looking at the agenda today and seeing this item, I just have one question of the City Council, but before I ask you the question, I would like to thank Tim and his staff at the Park District for the parks that they provide and maintain for the community, for the efforts and plans they are making at Crystal Lake Park, and the improvements that they are pursuing. But the question I have you, to you, is, is why is the city paying for park maintenance? Okay? And my question is, in this frame of mind, is that this agreement, intergovernmental agreement, is committing $200,000 to give to the Park District to dredge a Park District lake because there's a stormwater drain that feeds the park? And if one assumes that the stormwater drain is contributing to the sediment collection, and therefore, the city is partially responsible for the maintenance of the basin, then why do we allow our citizens even to use the park? Because they're damaging the grass, the sidewalks come in disrepair, park benches may be damaged. In other words, and the basin that's flowing in, I assume extends even outside of the city limits when the stormwater comes in. So my question is, we were just talking about a tight budget, and we were talking about police officers, and here's $200,000 that could pay for two and a half officers, at least for one year. And the city is doing park maintenance at this point in time. I know you have to juggle some money to move it over there, but when you've moved money, you can always free money somewhere else. So my question as a taxpayer is, why are you using city-available money for park maintenance? Does the Park District give you money to maintain streets in the city or lighting? I guess I would just like an explanation in terms of that differentiation. Not that we shouldn't be working together, not that we shouldn't be supporting each other, but why are we using city money for park maintenance?
Brad?
The monies that we're going to use for the 50% match up to the $200,000 come from the stormwater utility fee, and those monies can only be used for stormwater-related expenses, so that $200,000 could not be used for the police officers. The city staff supports the intergovernmental agreement because the source of the sediment is from the city, and, you know, so most of that sediment comes off of, you know, properties from the city, so we're kind of the source of it. So we feel that we have some sort of, you know, financial commitment in having that removed from the, from the Park District. You know, it's kind of our rationale behind that, but it is, it is going to be funded out of the stormwater utility fee, not out of general revenues.
And I assume we don't have stormwater sewer needs anywhere else. And that the maintenance, it just doesn't make sense to me that the city has the responsibility for this maintenance versus any other maintenance, because it's the citizens who create the park damage anyhow. If we have, if they have to make repairs or maintenance, it's because the citizens of Urbana are using it. So do they come and ask the city every time? The citizen comes in, there's an additional bicent tax to help us pay for the maintenance, even if it's not, it just doesn't make sense to me, when the city could use the money, and I don't know if the Park District could afford it. Maybe they could get a loan. You know, you're tight, you know? Maybe they have some other way of doing it. I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
Bill?
I just also had, I alluded to earlier, and I was going to make this comment anyway in support of this agreement, when the saline floods, Crystal Lake Park, basically, the whole park adds as a huge detention center, and that's a big benefit to the city. Champaign has spent tens of millions of dollars, I think on the order of 70 million so far, on the Boneyard Project, including the West Washington and the Big Hole, and all their stormwater, storm basin, stormwater control efforts to prevent flooding. And without the use of the park, the city would, the saline would fill up, the Boneyard would probably back up more. We definitely have five points inundated, and so between the park and Bucy Woods, that's a huge savings for the city to not have to go through that as much stormwater detention, although we probably should be doing more on the Boneyard side. And I know we're going to be having a study done on that, but I think you just can't overestimate the value of having that as a detention.
If I could just say one final thing, too.
Yeah, it's 10:26.
We do have MS4 requirements or water quality requirements the state requires us to meet, so the, this Park District is helping us out by capturing all that sediment and keeping that out of the saline for us. So, and in a way, they're helping us comply with our state permits, so, you know, that's another reason why we as staff support the city's contribution to the sediment removal.
Okay, Mayor?
Well, that's, we're helping each other, it's all the same taxpayers, so it's a good use of the money.
Dianne?
I move that we send Resolution Number 2016-12-069R to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dianne, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Agenda Item 14, Resolution Number 2016-12-116, an ordinance revising annual budget ordinance for FY 2016-17, Crystal Lake Sediment Removal.
Move to send to council, recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Charlie, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? See, yes, sir.
I did have a question, is how much money is actually in there? The stormwater?
The stormwater utility fee?
Yeah.
And we take in about 1.5 million. We do spend that down between reimbursements to the city for different stormwater related activities in our projects.
Could you also potentially for next week, show us what your, kind of give us an updated list of what your anticipated expenditures are out of that?
Yeah, I will provide it in a couple seconds.
Yes, ma'am.
Erin, I would also point out that at the, the last number that you see on that page is the estimated fund balance that we'll have at the end of the year in that fund. So if you want to know how much is going to be left.
Okay. I don't know which page you're talking about.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Agenda Item Number 15, Ordinance Number 2016-12-117, ordinance amending schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, requiring stop signs at certain intersections, Main Street at Smith Road, Tatman Court at Industrial Circle.
Good evening. Craig Schonkiler, Assistant City Engineer. The first ordinance is for the installation of stop signs for the eastbound and westbound traffic on Main Street at Smith Road, and also for the eastbound traffic on Tatman Court and Industrial Circle. This item was brought forward to the Urbana Traffic Commission, and the commission approved the installation of, or the recommendation of these items at its November meeting.
Charlie?
I'll move to send this to council, recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Charlie, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. There is some benefit to going late. Agenda Item Number 17, Ordinance Number 2016.
16.
Agenda Item Number 16, thank you. Ordinance Number 2016-12-118, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Weber, Lynn, Wabash Avenue, between Washington Street and Oregon Street.
So the second ordinance is for the restriction of parking along Weber Street, Lynn Street, and Wabash Avenue between Oregon Street and Washington Street. This item was brought forth to the Traffic Commission, and is basically a public safety concern. The street is basically too narrow to have parking on both sides. The fire department found in a response event that they were not able to get their fire trucks through. So the Traffic Commission took feedback from the public on this and decided that they would recommend restriction of the parking on certain sides of each of those streets.
Dennis?
Yeah, I question. Why did you choose the west side of Wabash to do the restriction? It looks like there's actually more free space on the east side, which would probably mean that there would be fewer residents affected?
The analysis was based upon actually the amount of parking available, so we chose to restrict the parking of the least amount. Plus, we also looked where there were adjacent fire hydrants, so that, kind of in conjunction with both. So where the restrictions are, is where there's the least amount of parking and also fire hydrants on that side.
Charlie?
Move to send this to council, recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and the ayes have it. Ordinance Number, Agenda Item Number 17, ordinance revising.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we extend our meeting time to 11:00.
Second.
It's with great reluctance, but... It's with great reluctance, but, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I think the ayes narrowly had it. Okay. Agenda item number 17, ordinance number 2016-12-119, ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2016-17, M-Cor Project One, Green Street Improvements.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief also. The report goes into a little more explanation. But November 4th, we had a lighting for the three M-Cor projects, one in Urbana on Green Street and two in Champagne. Both projects, the bids came in higher than our engineers' estimates. This is the second time we've bid these projects out. Earlier in July, we had done, had bids received, and they were high. Also, we thought we had made substantive changes to the plans and specs to have more favorable outcomes. Unfortunately, we did not. Time is of the essence from the standpoint that we typically have 45 days to award a contract. Our initial tact was to see where we could cut things, reduce things in the project plans and scope to meet our budget of about $8 million. After going through that process and working with IDOT on Feral Highway, they told us that was not permissible because it was violating some procurement laws. So we were forced with either, what we have before you tonight, a recommendation by staff to come up with $800,000 additionally to help this project move forward, or we go back to a significant redesign or cuts to the project, which would sacrifice, we think, the original intent and scope for safety and traffic efficiency and operational efficiencies. So we, we approached this with our partners. Our partners in this particular project is MTD and the university. Champagne is not a partner for this part of Green Street. They have met with their respective officials and boards and have agreed to help with the cost sharing of $200,000 each. Our cost match was $400,000. However, we really need to include contingency money of $400,000. Hence, what's before you tonight is a budget amendment for $800,000. We do need to let IDOT know this week what our, where our plans are, at least where we're leaning toward, so that we can move forward with this project and the, and the low bidder. And if we proceed in this path, we would probably have work start later this winter with water main work and move forward and take advantage of the full construction season next year, 2017. The project would not be done until 2018. What's key is, is having the area in front of the Union, two full summers between May and August. That's helpful in trying to get all the work that needs to be done. So, as we have probably stated before, this is an incredibly complex project. Unfortunately, it's very expensive. I think at the end, it's gonna be a great addition to the transportation needs on campus, particularly in the area, you know, between Goodwin and Wright, but really from Lincoln to Wright Street. With, we come to you with the recommendation that we would do this $800,000 amendment. Elizabeth helped me, and there's a fair amount of detail as to how we are with respect to reserves. And we'll try to answer any questions you might have.
So, I'm reminded of, when I was looking up some of the old, old ordinances that were passed long ago about Broadway, how they worked their streets. Then they just assessed neighboring property owners, the value of the street improvement. Between Lincoln and Wright Street, I think Kendrick House is the only one that actually pays taxes to Urbana. Does that sound right? Everything else is U of I property?
Or church, yeah.
So, of the 800,000, the U of I will be contributing 200,000, and MTD 200,000. Or that's, that's besides our 800,000. Okay. Well, they do pay around on those, no, flags in the middle of the street, right? We, we own the poles in the middle of the street, and they pay us for the banners?
They install them, they remove them. They have permission to install those banners.
Oh, man. I was thinking we could raise the rate like $1,000 a day or something. Okay. Thanks.
Eric?
So I'm, I'm looking for some good news here. Do we at least have a different concrete supplier from the people whose concrete is breaking up?
We do. It's a different contractor and probably a different supplier, yes.
Okay.
Dennis?
Well, I've actually already kind of imagined every time I go down Green Street heading toward the west in the campus area, that island of separation, which is gonna bring the campus buses away from the traffic flow and redirect it, and it's gonna make it a lot safer for students crossing toward the Union and other places on campus after they get off their bus, coming from their homes in Urbana. And so, all right, I'll just say, I'll, I'll support this. And while it's kind of a big bullet to bite, I don't know what we're gonna do without this project going forward. So I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance and 2016-12-119.
Second.
I send it to council with approval.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Diane. Further discussion, Aaron?
So, Bill, what, what do we know about the company? I'm, I'm curious as to what kind of work they've done in the past with us? What are their, what is their makeup as far as their workforce? What commitment do we have as far as them working with diversified workforce? It's like, we're talking $8 million worth of work here, right? So what, what, what do you have for me?
Well, the contractors do construction, so they're local. They haven't done work for us in probably 13, 14, 15 years on roadwork. They do, actually, they're our current sewer, miscellaneous sewer repair contractor for stormwater sanitary sewers. It's an IDOT contract. IDOT awards IDOC requirements, to your point, on diversity requirements. So, City of Champagne is the lead agency. We pay our portion of share to the City of Champagne. I don't know if you have anything more to add?
Concerning the diversity requirements, the way that IDOT typically handles the projects is there's a percent goal for diversity. So it'd be a disadvantaged business enterprise or a woman-owned business enterprise, something like that. We don't know the particulars of it because the project's not been awarded. We would find that out upon award, but they have a percent goal. You know, on a project, it would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 5% to 10% of the project has to be subcontracted out to those entities. And then they would have to meet those goals to satisfy the contract.
But Champagne is the lead agency, so they would, they would put, write those in? We don't have any say-so on that. Is that what you're saying?
Actually, it's not. It'd be the Department of Transportation that sets the goals. And we, we don't have any input on those.
So either the city does not have any input on what that would look like? So we don't, even when we, so we didn't award them this. The City of Champagne did?
Actually, the contracting agency is the Illinois Department of Transportation.
So IDOT awarded this company. They were the lowest bidder or whatever.
Yeah. Although today, we're asking for council to, you know, for the budget amendment. And then we would notify the department that the City of Urbana concurs with the award. And then, then the award could be made. It has not yet been made.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out, I guess, from our perspective. What influence or impact do we have on the decision if we're spending $800,000 or however much money we're spending on this? We don't have any say-so at all over diversity requirements or any of that?
Based upon our past experience, no.
Any further discussion?
Just one more thing. For whatever reason, the Exhibit A, Page 1, the very back sheet didn't fully print out, so there'll be a slight, there's gonna be a line item for the 809 expenditure number in your packet for Thursday. That wasn't shown.
And our total cost on this was how much?
Well, our total, total share is gonna be 3.2 plus 800, about $4 million.
So we can spend $4 million on something and have no control over who gets the job?
Correct.
Mayor?
Most of the money comes from the federal government. Is that correct?
Yeah, 3.5 million is federal government in this particular project.
Oh, for the, for our portion of it? But the whole big thing is like 15?
Oh, 15.7 million total. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, for the whole. Yes. But $42 million is the total, total project costs for all project, five projects.
Any further questions?
Just to clarify, our share was 3.5. This 800,000 would make it 4.3 million.
And the 800,000 comes from our, comes from our general fund? Is that what-
Reserves, yes.
Any further questions? I believe there's a motion and a second. I don't remember who made it. It's been too long.
I did.
Oh, you did, yeah.
No, you made it.
I did.
Well, let's go with it. It was made by Dennis and seconded by Diane. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 18, ordinance number 2016-12-120, an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2016, and ending June 30th, 2017.
Actually, I'm gonna speak to the next three ordinances here. They're all related. So there are three ordinances. The first levies taxes for 2016. The second would abate the tax levy to achieve our desired tax rate, which would be $1.355, the same as the current rate, if hospital properties are not included on the tax rolls. Or it would reduce that rate to $1.3152, the same as the City of Champagne, if those hospital properties are on the tax rolls when the levy's extended. The third ordinance would abate the levies for debt service payments that were established when the city council issued bonds in 2012 and 2014. I could give you more detail, but we went over this in November, and I sense that you'd probably rather move it along.
Any questions? Eric?
So, we now have an unexpected large bill, which is, you know, the previous item, which is, which changes, which is going to impact our reserves. Does that, is there any reason to look at these numbers again in the light of that? Or are we good to go for another year and without, you know, being imprudent?
Given that the portion of the tax levy that actually goes into the general fund is a really, relatively small piece of our general fund revenues, I don't think you'd wanna change anything in the tax levy ordinance. But we will be updating the financial forecast soon as we begin the budget process for the next year. And when we do that, we may determine that, you know, we need to make either budget cuts or increases in revenues to balance the budget for next year.
Bill?
Do you know, just in round numbers, about how much additional revenue it generates to increase the city tax rate by one cent?
Yeah, about 54,000, yeah.
Anyone else?
I'd like to move all three of these to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, let's take individual, individual votes, though.
Okay. An ordinance levying taxes for fiscal year beginning July 21, July 1, 2016. That's ordinance 2016-12-120.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? It's been moved by Charlie, seconded by Dennis, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Charlie?
Move ordinance number 2016-12-120, directing the Champagne County Clerk to abate tax levy for fiscal year, for tax year July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, to council recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Charlie?
And item number 20, ordinance number 2016-12-122, an ordinance directing the Champagne County Clerk to abate a portion of the 2016 tax levy related to general obligation bonds, Series 2012 and Series 2014, to council recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Agenda item number 21, ordinance number 2016-12-123, an ordinance amending the 2005 comprehensive plan of the City of Urbana, Illinois, adoption of the 2016 Urbana Bicycle Master Plan as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. I just, yeah, I would be glad to hear what you have to say on this.
I was gonna motion that we extend the meeting for 30 more minutes. No, I'm just kidding.
The chair would actually suggest that if, if time is not of the essence on this issue, and in order to give it its due hearing, should we maybe not, maybe move this to the next committee, the whole?
We wanted it done this year. I'll just have to change all the dates in the plan.
I'll be short, I promise.
I'll be even shorter.
Start talking, right?
Start talking fast!
This will be the first plan case that's been short, but anyway.
So I'm feeling, feeling a little fatigued, so hopefully my performance doesn't suffer. Okay, so we are seeking adoption of the 2016 Bicycle Master Plan, which would supersede and replace the 2008 Bicycle Master Plan as an element of the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. This past Thursday, Plan Commission made a recommendation that council adopt the 2016 Plan. You all received memos with more background on this. I'm sorry, I won't really go through much of that. Most of the heavy lifting on this plan was done by our consultant, the Champagne County Regional Planning Commission. Gabe Lewis is here from the RPC, so I'm going to turn it over to Gabe and let him tell you.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your time. I will try to take as little of it as possible. As Kevin said, this is an update of the 2008 Urbana Bike Master Plan. I'm gonna go through each of the comments, or the contents quickly of the plan with a little emphasis on the recommendations. So there is an executive summary, which outlines a vision that talks about, that summarizes the plan. The introduction shows that this plan supports the council goals and mayor goals. Chapter 2 talks about the historical growth of the network and that there has been an 80% increase in bicycling, or bikeways since the 2008 Bike Master Plan. In chapter 3, we look at other model cities and peer cities, and most cities have a bike and pedestrian coordinator of some sort. In the fourth chapter, we note that the target audience of this plan are casual adult bicyclists, also known as a basic bicyclist, or interested but concerned. In chapter 5, we describe all the facility types, on-street, off-street, point facilities. Chapter 6 talks about the existing conditions inventory of what was collected, including facilities, bike parking counts, and crashes. In chapter 7, we talk about the community and neighborhood workshops that were done. A pedestrian and bicycle survey was also done for the City of Urbana to get information on mode share and behaviors. Chapter 8 talks about the opportunities and constraints of developing bicycling in Urbana. The six goals of the plan are outlined in the next chapter, which are safety, connectivity, convenience, education, equity, and implementation. And also discussed here is how Urbana has gone from a bronze, bike-friendly community to now gold, with the desire to move on to platinum and diamond. And then Vision Zero is also discussed, which is at the end of this short presentation. In the bike level of service, we found that 70 more segments have been found comfortable to bike on since the 2008 Bike Plan was implemented. And then the recommendations are presented in a couple ways, 13 concepts and almost 70 corridors. You see in the pictures, we have existing picture, existing conditions, and then renderings with trails, side paths, bikeways, sharrows, and signage. We also talk about point improvements for crossings, drainage grates that are bike-friendly, bike parking that includes covered bike parking and near entrances. All these recommendations we have listed here summarize the plan. They go from signage, which is shown in that picture, something we're gonna be working with the city hopefully again soon. The Urbana Green Loop, there was a trails plan developed for the park district that connects all of the parks through- connects all of the parks through trails and bike routes and bike lanes, and about half of that has already been installed, that already exists. The MCor that was just discussed, safe routes to school projects, rail to trail like Kickapoo, bikeway access in low-income neighborhoods and to employers, access across Interstate 74, and opportunities in future development, redevelopment, arterial roads, stream corridors, and fitness trails. We have expanded recommendations in the non-infrastructure categories, education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluation, things like Bike Month, Bike Rodeos, Bike to School Day. And then, there's also wording about updating bike parking requirements in zoning ordinance, basing it on land use instead of motor parking spaces that are required. The last chapter, we have the implementation tables and maps that breaks things out in five-year timeframes. It's recommended to have a five-year review of the network and the bike plan. And then, funding sources are noted that the city can apply for, where they might not have funding already designated, and then, the need for a regional bike and pedestrian coordinator. And then, actions to complement the bike plan include adopting Vision Zero, as I mentioned, which is to have, I know that's a goal of this council, to have zero fatalities and serious injuries for motorists, bicyclists, pedestrians, developing a traffic calming policy, which is to reduce vehicle speed and create a safer, more welcoming environment for bicyclists, and also developing a neighborhood speed reduction policy where 25 mile per hour speed limits are considered. So, that's what we have, and happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Dennis?
And so, okay, I haven't, I guess I haven't gone online and reviewed this entire report, which is my bad, I guess, but I want to ask about the expectations of having a biking plan coordinator? Now, I know that that's probably one of the things that's required to jump to the next level, but when does the plan suggest that that be done? And is it going to be, start out as a half, a part-time position and then eventually evolve? I mean, I'm not sure that I see the hiring of an individual just to work on a bike plan for the city is probably best use of money at this time, but I mean, I just wondered how the plan made the, made the pitch to, to spend that money.
Sure. I can say for one thing, it does talk about bikes and pedestrians. Secondly, there's not a timeframe assigned to that right now. Thirdly, there is the word regional. We've been aware that there are some other agencies that might be interested in contributing to that. Beyond that, is there something that you want to add, or?
Bill?
Yeah, I, I think Gabe hit it on, but that's certainly a budget item. I mean, right now, it's been, you know, two, three, four people within Community Development and Public Works that have kind of picked up a little bit of the pieces. There's been a lot of huge outside help from other agencies or other people in the community to help us get to where we are, but I think it's going to be something hopefully over a period of time, but it doesn't say in this fiscal year, this is what's going to happen, because it is a budget impact situation. But right now, it's kind of tough because it's portions of a variety of people, and it'd be nice if it could be honed in on one person.
So, you, so you see that it's, it's going to, would relieve other staff members to do other jobs and give this particular individual?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And Dennis, if you're curious, it's on page 339 is where that is discussed.
Is that why I didn't get to that part? I just, I just, darn, I just am a little bit lazy.
Diane?
I read part of the plan, I didn't read all of it, but where, where is the part about maintenance of the existing bikeways? And I always go back to Race Street, which I attempt to ride on as much as possible, but many times, the bike lane is full of debris and limbs and chunks of pavement and that sort of thing. So, is maintenance dealt with in here? And just give me a page number and?
He's working on that.
Okay.
I can tell you, it's at the beginning of Chapter 12, the implementation.
That's probably why I didn't see that.
I think, just to, I don't, I mean, it's our duty and responsibility in Public Works to sweep streets, often within a certain cycle, but where there's bike lanes in particular, it's even a higher level, so.
So, there's a more frequent sweeping?
So, we don't plan on adding another street sweep, we don't plan on hiring another person, but we want to continue to be very diligent in sweeping the streets, whether it's Washington Race, whatever the bike lanes are. So, yes, maintenance is an important part, and also, maintenance dollars to do the striping and signage and pavement markings is 50, $55,000 a year that we have budgeted to do that sort of work every year. So, you know, the plan addresses that, but we have those components in place already.
So, when people ask, the correct answer would be those streets with bike lanes are swept more frequently?
Yeah, I want to say it's at least monthly, but I would have to ask John to confirm, but it's pretty often.
Okay.
Okay, so, before we go any further, I, I, in addition to Mr. Rose, I owe Annie Adams an apology. Misread your slip. You wanted to speak about this item before the agenda item was presented. Well, would you still like to come up and comment? All right.
My name is Annie Adams, and I am on the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Council, and I would just like to encourage passage of the adaptation of the Urbana Bicycle Master Plan. I'm hoping that we can get this through this year, and we can start our five years to get us moving, because then at five years, we're going to reassess where we're at and move forward. And my concern is, is if we push it back one year, we're just going to push ourselves back one more year. And I just think it's a good plan, it's a solid plan. As I stated this past week, there are things I would love in it, but this isn't about what I want. This is about what we as a consensus, as a city, have decided is the best thing. So, I think this is a good plan, and I would just like, really like to encourage us to pass it, and so we can move forward on it.
Thank you. Charlie?
Okay, I, I have read all of it multiple times. A lot of my comments have been incorporated in here, and I really appreciate that. Overall, I absolutely support this. There's one small piece I need to ask Kevin a quick question about.
Kevin, the, the, this very small goal in there, increasing bicycling, and it had different numbers over the last two years. What did it, or maybe Gabe knows it, what was the original number that was, the target? Was increase of 5% or?
You're talking, oh, okay, you're talking about the, that specific?
Mode share, yeah.
So, it, in the current version, we have returned back to what was initially agreed upon by the steering committee. So, it is 3% over the next five years.
Is that what was in the original, original?
I believe so. The, what, October 2015 draft?
Yeah, right. The one that came, yeah, okay, the original draft, okay. Is that, okay, is that your recollection, Gabe?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. My only comment on that is that 3% over five years is a pretty low target. We've, we've substantially grown over that, and one of the numbers I forgot to get done was, and we've grown substantially over the last 10 years in terms of bicycle mode share. It might be that we can bump that up to 4% over the next five years, even 5% over the next five years. We need to look at the numbers. So, I reserve the right to, to propose an amendment next week, bumping that number up a little bit. But otherwise, I would move to send this to council with our condition for approval.
Second. It's been moved by Charlie and seconded by Bill, the two most avid cyclists on the council. Go here. Okay.
No, I'm one of those casual, adult, concerned writers.
There you go.
It's the target audience.
Yep. All right.
I'm the target audience.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay, the ayes have it. And as a liquor license holder in the City of Urbana, I am mercifully required to recuse myself from the final agenda item, so I'll turn the chair over to Diane.
Okay, we have resolution number 2016-12-01, 071R, which is a resolution approving and authorizing entering into and executing an intergovernmental agreement for the performance of liquor license inspections.
Okay.
Chief Knightlinger.
Okay, early in the fall, the Illinois Liquor Control Commission investigator, Kenneth Williams, came to our city and asked if we'd be interested in participating in this program. And through the process of looking at this, it was decided that the fire department would be the best department to, to do this, and we could do it in conjunction with our inspection program, and specifically, our fire prevention permit program. This program was initialized in 2015 using the City of Naperville for Guinea Pig, and the fire department in Naperville did this in 2015. And after the presentation by Mr. Williams, I contacted their fire marshal, who was in charge of the program, and, and he told me their experience, the first year was a little tough because it was kind of forced, quickly forced through, but it smoothed out in the second year, and they're doing this in conjunction with their code inspections. And so, looking through the packet and the, and the memorandum, the resolution, you guys have any questions for me on this?
Charlie?
Yeah, real quickly, what exactly are you additionally inspecting here?
Okay, it will be, it would be a compliance inspection for the Liquor Control Commission. It's something that they've, they're currently responsible for, and.
Which is what?
Yeah, I really don't, well, it's, I've got a list here of several items that they look for. It's, it's cleanliness, it's license violations, it's records. It's several items. There's several items on their inspection report.
It's not done by public health, then? It has to be done by?
It's not done by public health. It's there.
And we make, and we make a little money.
We make a little money. We get $75 inspection.
I move since council recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll, yeah.
Moved by Charlie, seconded by Aaron. Any further questions or discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion passes. With no further items on our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.